Whether you're employed with a salary, or we get a nominal salary by being a city commissioner, and what we deal with and what we tolerate. I do have thick skin and I can take the public comments and stuff. But I feel like it's been turned around against me by bringing awareness towards public government. And whether you agree with how I conduct business, or issues that I bring to the board. I do my best and I try to look out for the public with things that I do bring up. The threats, the intimidation. I had to make a police report last Monday regarding this agenda item, which is sad that I have to deal with that in the community. I do my homework typically on agenda items. You can watch the MPO board meeting this morning if you'd like. And like I said, I know not everyone will agree with me. But to chastise me for, like I said, bringing awareness to important issues in the city. I just, I don't always agree with it. I still talk with my constituents whether you agreed with me on an agenda item or not. I can justify the reasons why I supported something or why I didn't support something. I'm a phone call away. For anyone that wants my cellphone number, I'll mention it again if you'd like to write it down. It's 772-247-4772. And going back to it, yes, I bring things up publicly because I can't discuss things with fellow board members. That's not what the Sunshine Law was designed for, at all. And as far as the code of conduct, I'm more nervous about the Florida Ethics Commission than anything. But yes, I try to be as transparent as possible and I know that's even been characterized by the public. There's two sides to every story, as what I've always been told my entire life, growing up. And for people to attack me, my friends, or my family, I just think it's uncalled for without hearing my side. And that's why I'm here tonight. And hopefully, I can present things to the board on things that have bothered me or that have concerned me by being a city public official. So, thank you.
Commissioner Giobbe.
I just would like to say that I really commend Commissioner Reed for his commitment to the community. I have not been threatened, thank goodness. And not sure how I would react, but probably not pleasantly. But I want to thank you all for being here this evening and I think that we can all conduct ourselves in an adult format and hear both sides of the story and go forward with that. I just would like everyone to understand that we are also constituents and residents of this city and care for it very deeply. So, I just want to let you know that. It's, you know, it's not just one side. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Clark.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and City of Stewart residents. I come to you tonight on the 27th day of October in tears. In tears because the country of my birth is now being battered by Hurricane Melissa at this time and possibly for the next three or four days with incessant rain and winds, which is unprecedented for the Caribbean and for many other places that have experienced a hurricane more than a three or four. This is projected to be number five in a small island that's completely covered by the effects of this hurricane. We understand nature. We understand the nature of God, if you believe in God. And we understand that things happen in this world, both good and bad. But we just ask that you would think of the people, what they're going through, and when recover time comes, how that nation will recover and how they will move forward. I just ask that you think of others at this time. And I know that when things happen to us here in Florida, we work hard to help each other. We think of last year with Hurricane Ian and we see the impact of water especially, even if not wind, water has a big thing. So, I just ask that you would hold that. That doesn't mean that I'm still not here. I'm a good decision maker. I'm here to participate. But really, my heart is there and I feel like I'm in tears. My other issue, I just brought this up at the CRA meeting before this because several people have brought it up to me and we haven't really done anything about it in the past few years. And we're almost at the end of the year. And this is a homeless issue. And it's going to come up more and more when the wintertime comes and people come from up north and we see more people here. I know that we don't have shelters or homes or inexpensive housing for persons who have an income or no income to live. But there ought to be a way for us to work with agencies and to try to figure out what we can do to help others. We know that there are lots of state statutes that's now prohibiting people from staying in places. And our law enforcement has to enforce that. But there's still a way for our community to try to work together and to do something. And if you have any ideas or solutions, please talk to us, talk to the Housing Solutions Council, talk to the county, whatever it is that we need to do. Let us try to keep that issue in front of us and try to continue to work on homelessness in our community. That's it, Commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Just generally, you know, my hope tonight is that, you know, we're not dissolving into teams or politicizing difficult items of discussion. It's not necessarily, you know, the typical affair that we're discussing, whether it's projects, even contentious items, Bright Line, or... It's not this type of a thing tonight. It's people, you know, it's not policy. So, you know, my hope is that after tonight's over, whatever happens, that, you know, we're all going to see each other afresh market. You know, we may disagree on how to go one way or the other on Agenda Item 4, but that we are all ultimately neighbors. And my hope tonight is that it doesn't, you know, break down into Team A versus Team B. But that the public will generally trust, the people in this room will generally trust that the human beings that are up here are trying to do the best they can and make the best decision with the information that they have. And, you know, it may be a little goofy, but as close as I could get to purple tonight, you know, even though I'm, however I may vote, just to show that I do appreciate and support Mike. And he's been a huge benefit for me personally. But, but again, you know, I hope we can all stay civil and respect each other. And often, I can be the most guilty of dissolving into arguing more than anybody. So, I'm saying that to myself as well tonight.
So, despite the turmoil that seems to swirl around this commission, there are some aspects of local government that are easy. And these tend to be the more ceremonial aspects. That's ribbon cuttings, groundbreakings, and the opportunity to read a proclamation for a 104-year-old resident. And there are other events that are not only ceremonial, essentially ceremonial nature, but they also involve protocol. And what I mean by protocol is how elected officials interact with each other. And one of the most significant of these events that's held on an annual basis is Legislative Action Days. And these meetings are held all over Florida prior to the legislative session. And they provide counties, cities, and towns the opportunity to formally present the issues that are most important to their communities. In addition, many local organizations take the opportunity to indicate to the legislators what's important for them to continue to be successful going forward. They're also well aware that most of the other elected officials are present to hear them. In addition to Martin County Chairwoman, Sarah Hurd, myself as mayor, the mayors of Indian Town and Jupiter Island speaking, I think this year we had 36 different organizations show up to speak to Senator Harrell, Representative Oberdorff, and Representative Snyder. Whether you like it or not, these three elected officials, they share our same constituency. And they have the ability to direct or deny substantial funding opportunities for our communities, sometimes in the millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars. All that is asked of the local elected officials served by these three is to be there, if only to greet them and thank them for their consideration. All the Martin County Commissioners were there. The Commissioners came in from Indian Town and Jupiter Island. The sheriff and some of his staff and members of the school board were there. Beside myself, not one other Stewart City Commissioner could find their way to the Blake Library. Believe me, their absence was noted. The taxpayers of the City of Stewart were not well-served by the inability of this commission to simply show up. Oh, I forgot, there was one other representative of the City of Stewart there, the City Manager, Mike Mortel. On a more laudatory note, I'd like to thank Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Clark, and myself for taking the time to understand how important the decision we're going to make tonight. And they took the time to speak with the department heads because one of the primary responsibilities of the City Manager is to run the city staff and to run the city. And I found this to be a remarkably interesting and revealing exercise. And I appreciate, I appreciate the concern of my two fellow Commissioners in making that effort.
How would you know that without violating Sunshine?
Because their schedules are able to be seen. Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager.
I have a couple of things. First, I am so saddened to mention that we lost a very dear and integral part of our Stewart family on Saturday. Our co-employee, James Allen, who ran the water reclamation plant, passed away on Saturday from some heart complications. And he's 51, or was 51 years old and leaves behind his wife and three children. It was a shock to everybody at the plant, as well as the rest of the employees. And I don't even have any words to describe the loss to the city and to his family. And it's just truly, truly unfortunate. Along those same lines, our community also lost Sheriff Crowder last week, who, for those of you that know him, he was one of the, or was the longest-serving sheriff in Martin County's history and was an integral part in the evolution of Martin County and the Sheriff's Department. And he was truly a part of our community. And he would spend as long as it took to speak to whomever wanted to talk to him about whatever the subject was. But he was also the guy that started putting Wrong Exit on the map and started getting the push to get people to recognize that Martin County was not the right place to go if you had ill intentions. And with the sad news being completed, I also should mention that our Community Services Department put on a Halloween haunted house a couple of weekends ago that was, again, they do a great job in Memorial Park and all the children, children absolutely love it. There was another event downtown this weekend that was very successful as well. We also received an email regarding the policing and traffic around the elementary schools on 10th Street. And the resident in the email wanted to thank the Stewart Police Department and also stated that the stepped-up law enforcement has made a huge difference, reducing speed at all times because it's clear that the drivers are aware that our police are enforcing the traffic-controlled areas. And that's all I've got.
Okay, can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda, please?
Move approval of the agenda is published.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Clark and a second by the Vice Mayor. Is there any public comment on this item? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Do we have comments from the public on non-agenda-related items? Madam Clerk?
Yes, I have Kevin Hempel.
That's not leftover from the prior meeting?
No, it was...
Okay.
Perhaps he's outside.
You don't see Mr. Hempel?
Kevin Hempel.
He left? We should rely on secondhand.
It looks like Karen Steger.
Steger?
Karen Steger.
It is Ms. Steger.
It is, I know, it don't look like Karen Steger. My name is Karen Steger. And I guess you want my address. 71 Southeast Harbor Point Drive, Stewart, Florida. I used to practice law in Stewart, Florida, until two years ago, greatest freedom of my life. But be that as it may. I've known Mike Mortel. I'm here to speak on behalf of Mr. Mortel.
Okay, that's on the agenda.
Oh, okay, sorry. Then I will wait till later.
Okay, thank you.
I have Walter Lloyd.
Good evening, Commissioners. Walter Lloyd, 150 Southwest Cabana Point Circle. I just wanted to step up and say how much I appreciate. We got a reminder from Commissioner Giobbe this week about the River Coalition and the Lory meeting, which was, I don't know if was hosted officially, but it was held here. And I showed up and I just was amazed at the amount of expertise and understanding of how to, of what's wrong with our waters and how to make corrective action to it. So, our new environmental attorney was here and all of that was just so inspiring. And I just want to say thank you so much because I can't think of a more important issue than our waters. I mean, we are a small coastal town and our waters, for most part, can't be even swum in or you can't eat fish out of it. I can't see a more important issue to this town than to clean up its waters and make it a place where people want to be and people can enjoy one of the major resources. So, again, thank you so much, Commissioner Giobbe, and thank you to the local community and our new environmental attorney. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Helen McBride.
Who?
She declined. I have no further public comment, Mayor.
Ms. McBride, we look forward to your contribution. Can we get a motion for...
Consent agenda.
Consent calendar.
Consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by the Vice Mayor and a second by Commissioner Clark. Is there any public comment on this item? See none, roll call.
Commissioner Giobbe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Rich?
Yes. Commission action, item number two. Mr., will you read that for our consideration, please, Mr. Baggett?
Sure. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, authorizing the mayor to execute an easement agreement between the City of Stewart, Florida and Florida Power and Light Company for the purposes of placement and maintenance of a conduit on the city-owned parcel known as Captain Adams Park located at Confusion Corner, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Would you like to, either, you or Mr. Mortel, like to?
All right, I'm happy to. All right, go ahead. Essentially, this is the park that's right on the corner of Confusion Corner. As part of the undergrounding of the power lines on both Seminole and Flagler Street to connect them to the main power grid, they needed a separate easement to go across that park. And it's been designed and drawn and is part of the agenda item. And it just shows it and it'll give them access to the underground power lines and make it so they can complete the job.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, you too. We have a motion by the Vice Mayor and a second by Commissioner Clark. Do we have any public comment on this item?
I do not.
Madam Clerk, okay. Any comments or questions from the Commissioners regarding this?
I was just going to ask, are there currently overhead utilities there and they're just moving it underground? Or are they just taking an alternative route, I guess, so they can...
All of the utilities are currently overhead. There are overhead utilities that pass through Confusion Corner, but not where it is that we need the easement in Captain Adams Park in order for them to be able to connect the power lines to a substation that'll allow them to access it and service it.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Reed.
No, no other questions? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Rich?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Giobbe?
Yes.
Mr. Baggett, will you read item three for our consideration, please?
Sure. Resolution number 72-2025, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, approving the installation of additional stop signs along Southeast Kruger Parkway, Southeast Parkway Drive, Southeast Madison Avenue, Southeast Dolphin Drive, and Southeast Flamingo Avenue between Southeast Ocean Boulevard and 10th Street, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Mr. Mortel, would you like to, or Jody, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Arbizaw, Planner One with the Development Department. Oh, reading the resolution.
I've already read it.
Okay.
And Jody Kugler, the Development Director with Development Department. Staff in the Development and Police Departments conducted a field review along Southeast Kruger Parkway, Southeast Parkway Drive, Southeast Madison Avenue, Southeast Dolphin Drive, and Southeast Flamingo Avenue. The field review is between Southeast Ocean Boulevard and 10th Street. During the review, staff identified eight intersecting streets that are suitable for the installation of stop signs. On Kruger Parkway and Southeast Stafford Drive, there is an existing stop sign to stop before getting on Southeast Kruger. Staff proposes a stop sign on the north side of Southeast Kruger Parkway. On Southeast Kruger Parkway and Southeast 7th Street, there is an existing stop sign to get onto Southeast Kruger Parkway. Staff proposes a stop sign on Southeast Kruger Parkway to stop traffic before intersecting 7th Street. On Southeast Parkway Drive, staff recommend adding two stop signs, one facing north and one facing south. There's already an existing stop sign that that stopped traffic on Southeast 7th Street going into Southeast Parkway Drive. On Southeast Madison Avenue, staff recommend adding a stop sign facing north to stop traffic at the intersection of Southeast Madison Avenue and Southeast 7th Street. Staff is recommending adding a stop sign facing north on Southeast Dolphin Drive and Southeast 9th Street. Staff recommend adding a stop sign facing north at the intersection of Southeast Dolphin Drive and Southeast 7th Street. And I should say that, I should have said this the first... The blue stop sign are the proposed stop sign. The red signs are the existing. Staff is recommending adding a stop sign facing north at the intersection of Southeast Flamingo Avenue and Southeast 9th Street. Staff recommend adding a stop sign facing north on Southeast Flamingo Avenue at the intersection of Southeast 7th Street. And I will ask Chief Zanellavich to speak of the Red Speeds photo enforcement solution.
Commissioner?
Hello. As we were discussing options with development and looking at what's available in the enforcement role, this is just one option. I'm not endorsing Red Speed. There are many companies that offer a speed enforcement camera for school zones. They are specializing it and they're popular right now down south, but it's an option. There's a bunch of different technology. They have fixed cameras. They have cameras on a trailer that could be moved from one school district or school zone to another. So, there are some options if that was a direction that we wanted to research and go further with. And it takes a photo, a speed measurement photo of the vehicle and the license plate and sends the registered owner the violation. The fine schedule may differ from company to company and that's stuff that has to be worked out. I haven't studied far enough to know which company may be better or if that's even an option for the city to explore in the future. But these cameras are gaining some popularity in the school zone enforcement and they would only be on during the school zone traffic restrictions.
This ends our presentation.
Okay. Are there any questions of staff from the... Commissioner Giobbe?
I think that Commissioner...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It'll light first, go ahead.
Okay, Commissioner Clark.
Let me forget all my stuff now. We don't have, we don't have a traffic engineer at the city, but I think we have somebody. We have Kim Lee Horn on call. But I'm trying to figure out, why isn't it just all four-way stops at all of those places? I was curious about the little blue thing, that's number one. And then with regard to Chief's presentation, I was wondering, is it going to cost us? And if it does, would it just be only in this area? What about Palm Beach Road and the other places? And 10th Street on the other side, where people enter into the J.D. Parker School District area and then about hours and all that kind of stuff? But I guess if we did have a contract with a company like that, that's something that would be worked out as to how far they would have those cameras with regard to the school and how it would be helping the ingress and egress during school hours and that kind of thing. That's it, that's my two things. So, with regard to the potential for four-way stop sign at all of those places, I noticed you're putting it at one, sometimes just at one corner, we have two existing. How is that, why would that work?
We looked, the police chief and development staff went out and looked at all of the intersections where the traffic study, the traffic calming study took place. There are existing stop signs that are already there. So, we're just looking to see where this would great, have a great impact and slow traffic down. And these will be, these are the additional, sorry.
Chief, would you like to answer a question regarding how Red, I forget, what's it called?
The Red Speed is one company. Yes. What question could I answer?
She asked, what does it cost?
I don't have, I've not investigated those options further because, again, there's an optic that goes with that when we're putting speed enforcement cameras in a neighborhood, revenue generator, those types of things. And the goal is to reduce speed. It's an option for us to explore. I haven't gone into the dollars and cents of that company or any other company.
The research that we did is that it won't cost the city anything because they take the revenue from the cameras and they actually give money to the city. But as the Chief's pointing out, there's a Big Brother feeling to that that a lot of neighbors don't like.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering about, the extent of it.
But that's why the state law was amended to say only in school zones, only during the school hours. And then they're turned off and that's it.
Yeah, I just want to bring that out.
So, they've had remarkable success rate in slowing down speeding. And we're talking about the safety of our children. So, we should seriously consider...
I will point out as well that this conversation obviously started last spring. And it kind of stalled because of the summertime and school let out and it was a little more difficult to implement. But we still did traffic counts and moved forward with it. And the Chief said that at the end or mid of, middle of August, they were going to start implementing enforcement rather than just warnings because one of the things we recognized is that this isn't like we're in Bartow and everybody's cutting through on their way to Tampa and it's a bunch of strangers blowing through our town. to Tampa, and it's a bunch of strangers blowing through our town. The people that are on these streets are the people that live and work in this neighborhood, and so our police officers have been giving warnings rather than tickets, because they feel bad for the people, and as a result, when the Commission adopted the policy to up the implementation and enforcement of the tickets, well, first of all, the implementation enforcement has gone up by hundreds of tickets. I think before they started, it was about seven hundred and some tickets a month in warnings, and about a hundred tickets a month in violations, and then from August to September when they started, it was four hundred and fifty citations, so four times as many tickets were issued. But as a result of that alone, we've seen this progression that the enforcement hasn't slowed down at all, but the number of tickets is starting to slow down, because the word is getting out, and people are understanding that if you speed through these neighborhoods, you'll get a ticket. And as a result, there are other options, or multiple options that can be used together or in tandem. You could do the lights in the, in the school zones, you could keep enforcement higher, you could do other traffic calming devices, et cetera, but these are just ideas for the Commission to kind of implement and give direction to the Planning Department so that they can, or zoning department, so they can move forward with this project and keep going in the direction, or follow the policy that the Commission wants to adopt and go in that direction. We weren't here today to have a drop-dead final project to be adopted, because we've recognized that this is always intended to be kind of a work in progress and a reaction to the successes and failures of different attempts and different things we try along the way.
And we're trying to keep a force, or a continued presence with the speed trailer, we move it around, there's a little white trailer that displays the speed. We have one, and we're looking to purchase another one this year in the current budget year. That helps to educate folks and see the speed, and like this, we could counter-highway. We had it out there for a week, and now the officers have gone to enforcement mode on counter-highway to slow people down. That speed trailer that we currently have does not issue tickets, it only reads the speed and gives us a vehicle count and captures that data for us. So from that, we can study it and see what type of changes, and yes, we have a lot of traffic in town, and we're going to consistently have traffic complaints and issues, but we seem to be feeling in the school zones especially, that people are responding to the warning signs that are put up, the big message board that Milton's crew put up on Tenth Street warning everyone, "You've been warned," or "This is your warning, slow down or you're gonna get a ticket." So, and we'll keep those efforts up throughout the school year, and hope to see more feedback from the community that they're seeing the slowdowns as we'd like to see them.
And Chief, I believe that these tickets that are issued, they actually issue them, you don't, or the sheriff doesn't, but it doesn't, it doesn't count for points on your insurance, and it doesn't go on your license.
That's, that's correct, that's my understanding. We would in the Stewart Police Department.
It's just a monetary fine.
Right. It wouldn't be controlled by the city, it's controlled by the company.
Right.
And then whatever revenues are generated, that's different companies.
Some goes to the school district, and some goes to the city, the municipality, so...
Again, that's just an option, not necessarily advocating that we do that, I'm just giving it as an option through our discussions for, you know, other ways to slow down speeders.
Mr. Vice Mayor, this is your neighborhood.
For me personally, I'm not a big fan of the cameras, it really creeps me out. Just around kids and schools, and I know, I get the intent, but I'm glad we're ticketing people, but that's an expensive solution as well, you can't have a cop there all the time. And those signs, the big blinking, you're going so fast, is only as useful as it's there, and it's gonna be bouncing around. So, I think to get back to the original intent of what even brought this up, it might be nice to have Bonnie come up, but the stop signs may be a temporary, you know, Band-Aid to try to do something right now, but at least with Tenth Street, you're on both sides. You know, on the other side of the street, you have the CRA that you can lean on, you know, on our side, you don't, but you probably need to, in my opinion, fundamentally transform that street with medians and kind of choke it down, just like we were talking about doing in our previous meeting. And then, you know, I'd like to lean on Bonnie for this, because we actually had a conversation about this yesterday, but versus stop signs, even having Bonnie work potentially with Joe Capra or something, and start to formulate a little bit more of a functional solution, even if it's inexpensive, i.e. posts, you know, bumpers, posts, to start to look at more like neighborhood traffic circles and not just stop signs, that actually start to slow down traffic versus, and I'm sure you can speak to this, Bonnie, but stop signs often lead to slowing down and then speeding up again, you know, so depending on where you are on that street, you might be the drag strip portion where your kids are playing. Do you mind coming up? I hate to put you on the spot. I would appreciate, because Bonnie was part of the original intent to achieve this.
Do you want to take it back to the CRB or CRA for more in-depth discussion?
I would like to, I would like to.
I had questions.
I'm not opposed to that at all.
That's okay. I mean, and my questions would include Bonnie's input.
I know, but she, I'm just assuming she's not prepared. I think, I have no problem taking it back to the CRB.
Okay, good.
And have her have the ability to be prepared.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's all right.
Commissioner Reed?
Just, just for clarification, this area is not located in a CRA.
Correct. What I was referring to is the other side of Tenth Street, which needs traffic calming as well, it's not just this side.
Yeah, I wanted to say, I'm not a big fan of photo enforcement solutions either, and touching base on Bonnie, I believe in order to make this more effective, you wanted speed humps with stop signs, if I read your email correctly? No, not at all?
We should bump it back to the CRB.
It was the opposite, okay, the email said different maybe, but anyway, I'm looking at the PDF that you had sent us, Bonnie, and I actually like these solutions, by the way, a lot, as far as the photo depictions and stuff, they were very good. I know we can't paint crosswalks and stuff anymore with DOT, but yes, Bonnie's stuff in here was actually very good, and I'm glad, Bonnie, you didn't put it to where when you're going down a road, that you put a median in the middle of it. Those are actually very hard to navigate and go around, and yours was more like sweeping, so it, it won't stop traffic, so people aren't hitting medians, but it would still slow traffic down. But I, I don't think the stop signs are necessarily going to solve it, according to Bonnie, and I respect what you do, because I know this is your career specifically, and what you do. That's all I had.
Commissioner G O B?
I also received an email from Bonnie, but I received emails from other people who had been part of that group of community we came, we all looked at all the different, the calming roads, and all of those things were all good ideas. Actually, the least effective were the stop signs. People get to the stop sign, they get through it, they slow up, and then they speed up to catch up. I mean, so it's really not effective. I'd like to see it go back for, other than just adding additional stop signs, I don't think they're effective. I think we should look at other things. I know that the state has put a stop on painting certain crosswalks. I don't know if they would consider something that would be allowable in a school zone.
We would just have to have that list of what's allowable.
No, you can still paint them, right, it just can't be affinity.
Yeah, yeah, so we can make it something that would be certainly striking. The other, and I'm certainly not in favor of those, and I want to thank every mother and family that wrote to me regarding this issue, it's really important. I was one of the Commissioners who was very adamant about going from warning to tickets, and I understand that these are our neighbors, but I'm sorry, if you're the neighbor and you live here, you should be more concerned about our children walking to and from school and that they might be hit. So if it, if it takes a ticket, and that was my question for Chief, was obviously it's working. The tickets are working, it's decreasing, people are starting to slow up in the area without having to be ticketed, so that's a good thing. I don't know how long we could keep up, for police patrol in that area to do that, maybe we'd have to move from school district to school district, but at least people who do speed would know that we do have intent to ticket them.
Yes, and the awareness is important, and our PIO frequently puts out information on it, and we're there as often as we can have officers there. We have three officers being assigned to a traffic unit in just a few weeks, and there'll be full-time dedicated to traffic enforcement throughout the city in addition to the routine patrols.
Well, I want to thank you, and I want to thank your policemen, your staff. I want to thank Bonnie. Bonnie, you've done such a great job in leading us all down this road of safe travel around the school system, and I also believe that we should be moving it to...
Should we see if we can get a motion, Commissioner Clerk?
So I'm happy to make a motion.
Hold on. Do you have a question of staff regarding this issue?
I have my light on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So, I hear all the comments about what Ms. Moser has done, and I see what staff has suggested, and I'm not saying that traffic signs are the most important thing or the only thing, we do need traffic calming, meandering, whatever needs to happen, and I'd like to make a motion that we take this back to staff, because it's not a part of the CRA, so it can't go to the CRB, but if staff would, I don't know if it would, if it'd come back to us, if there's another discussion, or at least we could give permission for maybe staff either to form an ad hoc committee with Bonnie and some of the members of the community again, and try to come up with a plan that's not just stop signs, but incorporating some of the other innovative ideas that Ms. Moser has provided to us.
I'll second the motion.
Are you tabling, or are we just gonna let this?
This was up for...
Is this motion fail for...
I think, well, first off, staff, staff needs guidance, so I think the motion is getting, giving guidance to, so I think we need to go forward with the motion, it's giving guidance to the staff of what to do. If you just let it die, they're not getting instruction on what to do.
Do you feel, do you feel that it's clear, Commissioner Clerk's motion with regard to instruction?
Mayor Rich, I do believe the request is to go back and speak to the residents and to form an ad hoc committee.
Okay.
Is that satisfactory?
I don't know that we need a committee, I think we're getting a little bureaucratic. I think if we just either, I don't know if bumping it back to the LPA is appropriate, or just having another commission meeting where there's been a little bit more time to prepare some solutions and look at next steps, versus just going this route, I think it would be better to just table this now, and then have a future agenda item, you know, as, as we're ready to be able to entertain some different options, more than creating a whole new committee.
And just to make sure that they go back to the community while it's tabled and bring it back to us.
Tabled to a date uncertain.
Yeah.
Will that be sufficient?
Which suggests that you work with Bonnie.
Yeah, we would just have to read notice it, obviously. If you were to state a date certain.
Does that work for your motion?
And work with Bonnie while Bonnie's...
I couldn't hear you, Lee, what'd you say?
Never mind, Mr. Mortel pointed out, it's not an ordinance, so it's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
I think you're, you're tabling it to bring it back. If it's amended, because staff might amend it, it seems to me that you guys want more options than what's being presented, so it might return as the same resolution or agenda item, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we've all a little bit of vague, and maybe Jody needs something a little more concrete to work with.
So, just, just the history, we did have a meeting with the residents, we did have, with the help of Mrs. Moser, she did provide boards and looked at the different options, and we did bring that back to you as an agenda item, just as a discussion, and this is what was talked about during discussion, this was the temporary solution at that time, but staff would be more than happy to go back and work with Mrs. Moser and figure out what would be more beneficial, and then also, there could be a budget item attached to this as well.
Yes.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Clark?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second by Commissioner G O B. Do we have any public comment on this item to be tabled?
Mayor, I have a public comment from Bonnie Moser, if she'd like to go come forward.
She finds her way up here.
Bonnie Moser, eleven twenty-one, southeast Tenth Street. Before I start, I do want to thank the Stewart PD for everything they've been doing on our streets. Myself and neighbors have commented throughout the neighborhood that speeds have slowed, and we really appreciate it. That being said, enforcement is one part of calming traffic in an area. Other parts include education and then the actual design of the street. It sounds like you guys heard what we said this week or last week to you as a neighborhood, and I appreciate you taking that into account. I was pretty stunned when I saw the stop signs as a recommendation, because I made it clear over the last few workshops and commission meetings when we talked about this, that stop signs actually increase speeds in between cars stop, and then folks mentally want to make up that time, so they speed up in between the stop signs. Speed bumps do the same exact thing, that's why people don't like them. I, I, yeah, I was, I think neighbors were hoping to hear our view of what they heard so that we knew that you all had understood what we had said, but, yeah, I would, I would love to work with city staff and try and bring you like some better short-term solutions, and then maybe talk about some long-term solutions as well. One other thing just to note, citywide, whenever you're making decisions, the MUTCD, the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, it's our federal guidance, does say that stop signs shall not be used to, for speed management, so these aren't the tool that you're supposed to be using. And hopefully, we can have something for you soon.
Thank you, Ms. Moser. Any additional public comment?
I have none.
Roll call, please.
To table this item, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner G O B?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Rich?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Collins?
Yes.
And so, we come to the item of primary concern for this evening. Who did?
Commissioner Reed.
Are you amenable to? These people have all been very patient. Can we do it to ten minutes, Commissioner Reed?
Six forty-five.
Well, that would be six forty. Fine, we'll stand in recess till six forty-five.
Thank you.
I don't understand the point of that.
I'm calling the regular meeting of the Stewart City Commission for the 27th of October 2025 back into order. Thank you all for your patience. We are on the discussion, item number four, the discussion and deliberation of the city manager's employment contract. Mr. Baggett, you have requested to frame this discussion for us.
Sure, absolutely. After the discussion at the last meeting, I thought it'd be wise to give you a little bit, some legal advice on Mr. Mortel's contract, and so I wanted to go through some of things. So first off, under his contract expressly states that he is an employee at will and that he reports directly to the commission, as do I. All the other employees work under Mr. Mortel as the city manager. And so in paragraph five of his, of his contract, it expressly states that he can be terminated with or without cause. And so I want to talk about that. So when you terminate an employee without cause, you don't have to provide a reason. However, you can provide a reason, but it might just not equivalent or meet the cause definition. And so you are able to give a reason or no reason, but there's another part of the contract that says for cause, and it doesn't give a definition. Instead, it refers to a Florida statute. And so I wanted to go through the Florida statute, which is 100.361. It's just, it's what provides grounds for the removal of a city commissioner under the state law. And so it gives seven grounds. And so the contract refers to this statute that gives these seven grounds. And so the first one is malfeasance, and the second one is misfeasance, the third one is neglect of duty, the fourth one is drunkenness, the fifth one is incompetence, and the sixth one is permanent inability to perform official duties, and seventh is conviction of a felony involving moral turpitude. Some people might have some, are not clear on malfeasance in this reason, so I've taken the liberty of looking up some definitions so I could share with you. Malfeasance would be the performance of an act that is legally unjustified, harmful, or contrary to law, especially by a public official or a person in a position of public trust. Our fourth district court of appeal in a case gave a legal definition, and it's similar. It says, "The performance of a completely illegal or wrongful act by an elected official." Misfeasance is a little different. It's a transgression, especially the wrongful exercise of lawful authority. It's the performance of a lawful action in an illegal or improper manner, the improper performance of a lawful act resulting in harm or injury to another person or entity. I thought that I would give you a little bit more definitions on that. I don't think we need to go through neglect of duty, or drunkenness, or incompetence, permanent inability to perform official duties, or a conviction of a felony. There are some similarities between the contract and our employee handbook, which is chapter 26. Both the handbook and, I mentioned already, the contract has said he's an employee at will. The chapter 26 of our employee handbook also identifies that the city manager and the city attorney are employees at will. There's only, there's only minor differences between the contract and our employee handbook. And for example, in the contract, it gives Mr. Mortel severance of 20 weeks, whereas in our employee handbook, to the other employees, it's 90 days, which is approximately 13 weeks. There's also some differences in, in cause for termination. Employee handbook does not refer to this Florida statute. Instead, it has its own areas adjusting or giving reasons for cause. Florida law, those, Florida law states that when there's an employee policy versus an employee contract, the employee contract terms will prevail. So those minor differences don't really matter. We can just rely on the contract. If, if the commission wants to terminate for cause, it's going to be my opinion that the commission will need to provide some, one of those, or one or more of those seven areas, grounds, the malfeasance, misfeasance, neglect of duty, drunkenness. And I think you're going to need to identify any one of those and provide a factual basis and support of the violation, and also provide a little bit, not only factual support, but witnesses or any documents that you have that prove your assertion of the violation. And I think it's important, and that's part of the procedural due process. We give a similar process to all the employees when they're being disciplined for, for cause, including termination. If we don't provide Mr. Mortel with procedural due process on the, on the cause finding, it could potentially expose the city to another claim that he may have for us not giving procedural due process. And in my prior career as a litigator, I litigated due process claims, so I'm familiar with that. And that would be a separate claim than any other claim that he might have. So I think it's very important that we comply and provide the procedural due process. I think that we would have to do, identify, provide him that information, and then we would have to schedule another meeting. I would suggest a specially set meeting, maybe next week, to come back and, and give Mr. Mortel an opportunity to address the allegations. I would say, under our policy, it has to be no earlier than two days from the time that you notify, but I think we also have to comply with noticing public hearings and so forth. So I think next week would be sufficient enough time. I think it would be better to do this on a specially set versus on a regular meeting, because it could interrupt a regular meeting. I think our next meeting have, have, we have a lot more agenda items on it than, than this time. Section 2-22 of our Code, Code of Ordinances describes and pertains to an investigation by commissioners of charges of wrongdoing by the charter employees. That's the city manager or the city attorney. It goes on and describes the investigative process in a hearing before the commission, and we can rely on that. If, if you are going to go the cause route, and we have a hearing down the road, you know, like we did last time, Mr. Mortel, you have the option of allowing him to continue to work, or you could place him on paid administrative leave until that hearing. The contract also allows Mr. Mortel to voluntarily terminate his employment by resigning or retiring with 45 days written notice to the commission. However, under that option, he would not be entitled to severance. If, if it's termination for cause, he's also not entitled to severance. If you do termination without cause, then he would be entitled to, to, to severance. Another option that had been discussed or mentioned, I wanted to point out, would be that the commission could perform a performance evaluation, and, and even give Mr. Mortel a personal improvement plan. This is another option that we do regularly on a normal basis with our employees. If, if you have any questions on that, I had discussed that with the Human Resources Director, Roz Johnson. And if you have any questions tonight about that, that area, or that roadway or pathway, I would suggest that we bring her up and have her explain that process a little bit more in detail. And last but not least, depending on the commission's course of action, you would need to appoint an interim city manager if, if you're going to go the route of termination of employment. And I think that came up at the last meeting, and you instructed us to have all the directors here, and I believe all of them are here. I'm happy to answer any further questions that you may have at this time.
Are there any questions of Mr. Baggett?
Lee, for clarification purposes, if the direction was resignation or terminating with cause, that would affect future employment for city manager, correct? Or potentially?
I, I, yeah, I guess potentially it could, a future employer could be, if he's terminated with cause, yeah, it could affect his future employment. I don't know that I would agree that the resignation would, but, and, and the termination without cause, I would say, would, would be similar to a resignation. And like I said, if you terminate without cause, you, you can terminate him for a reason, it just doesn't rise to the level of one of those seven areas. Or you could just not give a reason. That's, that's the option on, under an employment at will.
So I wanted to reiterate what I said during my city commission comments. This entire process has been chastised towards myself for even bringing the issue forward to the board, and I had to do it publicly. And whether or not it's the right decision or not, I guess we'll find out. But yes, there were things that caused me concern throughout my, I guess, due diligence, or things that were brought forward to my attention. Whether it or not it meets cause for malfeasance or misfeasance, that's a direction we would have to go, and it would prolong it. And I respect you, Mike, for all the great things that you have done for the city, whether you agree with me or not, Mike, or whether the public agrees with me or not. But the things that caused me concern were, there was an agenda item for a lot split that was very controversial, that came in front of this board, that was voted on. There was a, a traffic citation and a traffic stop that caused me to stop and think about that. And I thought, you know, that was concerning to me as well as a board member up here. And, you know, certain agenda items being misrepresented, specifically Brightline in particular, when I first got elected, when I first did my due diligence. And I watched the meeting minutes, by the way, for the city and the county. And that caused a lot of concern for what I uncovered. So what I'm going to do, out of respect for Mike and the things that he has done, and I'm sure the public will come up and mention those things, that was my reason for bringing this forward. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to make a motion to terminate Mr. Mortel for, without cause, and put Joel Lee as the interim city manager for the time being. My job is not to punish people up here. That's not in my scope of work, but that's my motion to be discussed and allow the public to weigh in on it. So thanks.
I second the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Reed and a second by Commissioner Gob. Do we have any public comment?
I do. I have Raj Patel.
Okay, before we begin, I would just like to remind you, you may not address, insult or praise any member, anybody who sits up here individually. You may address me personally as the mayor, but not anybody else who's sitting up here. So I would just ask that you observe that.
Mayor Rich, can I ask you a question on that? I have no problem getting criticized if anyone wants to call me out for what I've done. I don't know if that would be a motion, or you as the chair would allow that, because I can take the criticism by standing up here. That's why I'm a public servant. I don't, I'm not opposed to it.
I don't see the need for it, Commissioner Reed. Why don't we, why don't we try to enforce as much decorum as possible? Okay. Madam Clerk?
I win a prize for being the first person to speak. There's a lot of people out there, just so that you know that. Okay, so I'll try to get below the three minutes. Raj Patel, city of Stewart, taxpayer. I live in Martin County, 4545 Long Bay Drive, Palm City. I'd like to read to this commission my daughter's graduate school application essay. Couple of months ago, sorry, actually, a month before this fiasco. So question number two, in about 300 words, what are the characteristics of a leader you admire, and how does that influence your leadership style? Some characteristics that I admire from a leader are, this is what she's saying, "Some characteristics that I admire from a leader are fairness together with fortitude and strength and direction. A leader must be confident and unwavering when a final decision is made. They take full responsibility and ownership of the, of the decision. They're committed to listening and looking beyond success. A leader gathers information, plans, performs, and plots." An example, rather than giving one that's, one that's famous and well read about, would be the current city manager of a beautiful town in southeast Florida called Stewart. I'm sorry, this is part of her essay, so she mentions the word Mike Mortel. "To keep the city and his staff on the top, he made hard, long-term decisions, navigating his department into its next phase to stay quaint and safe and not become like a West Palm or a Delray Beach. He, at the same time, makes decisions to keep the city as fiscally sound as possible," which we all know, we're pretty fiscally sound. "He listens. He prioritizes collective well-being and stands by his principles even under pressure." She, she seems to have known what was coming. "I was born down the street from Mr. Mortel's office, so I don't have to look too far to, to find, for example, a Nelson Mandela from Africa, or an Abraham Lincoln from the 1800s America. My leadership style would be similar to his. I would be a leader with bold visions. I would listen actively, build credibility, and be honest with moral courage, and have empathy to make progress for everybody that's involved in this city. This would be the legacy I would wish to achieve at the end of my career, and when I'm 80, retired, and spending my time reading and reminiscing about my young days as an individualist, 20-something-year-old with a then-future to make a difference." That was her answer. Just a pretty smart, progressive girl, but time will tell. I'm sure she'll get into college, into the college of her choice, I hope. Mike, sorry, Mayor, I know there are people that don't agree with my daughter's essay and don't agree with what you do, but on the whole, it doesn't matter. None of this is going to matter in 10 years. We would have all moved on in 10 years. You know, you've always been for the city of Stewart, and you always will be. This is your legacy, not this unfortunate circumstance. This is not your legacy. I'm not going to ask this commission not to fire you. The decision, as we all know, has been made, Michael. You, like yourself, like myself, you're arrogant, you continue to be young, you're good-looking. Keep, keep well. Keep well, okay? Everything will be fine. City staff will be fine, and Stewart will be fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Raj.
Hi, Jimmy Smith, president of NAACP, member of Pentecostal Church of Christ. I just come, I have heard so many things here today, including the storm and lost a life at the water department, all the rules, the threats, all the things that we have heard today in this place. And I'm looking at you commissioners, all you smart, loving, kind people. And I look at all the people that came out today, and I just believe that I want to use my three minutes on one thing. Our country in a chaos in this world today. Our city, our county, everybody is hating one another because of a R or I or D, red, white, and blue flag, because of where we are. I'm looking at the history of this city and this county from 1963, when there's dirt roads and rattlesnakes. I remember when it was segregation. I remember when my mother couldn't go to the same bathroom, eat out, drink out the same fountain. I look at that, where how so, how far God have brought this county and this city. And I just want to pray, because we don't need nobody to be hurt or hurt or threatened. I just know that, in order for unity to come together, only God can do it. He do it through our His Spirit of God. The Holy Spirit, I'm asking that the Holy Spirit come down on this place. Whether you believe or don't believe, I have to pray. Father, I just come today, God, and I'm asking that all those that's on the, on the news, on this, listening, looking, or hearing what you has to bring before this commission today. God, I ask that you'll let this Holy Spirit to come down on all of us. God, that you'll touch us in the deepest part of our heart. God, remove the evil, the hatred, oh God, and instill in us that love and unity, and that meaning and kindness that you call upon us. God, we are a country that believes on faith. God, we believe in you, one God, one faith, one baptism. And God, we come together, we hate one another. We don't like one another, just because we don't agree. God, you said in your word that we didn't, you didn't say anything about like one another. You say love one another. Love conquer all, draw all things to you through love. God, I ask that you'll know in each and every one of them up here today, even though the, the community that's here today, God, touch our hearts and understand, say in Matthew chapter seven, "Judging not, you be judged to the same statutes." God, your words, these are your words. And you say, "Ask not, receive not." And I'm asking you today, God, that you'll send your Holy Spirit down upon this city and this county, and everybody that listen today, God, that you have a heart, harmonious. Put our arms around each other. We don't know what the enemy have, but the enemy have came in and called us to be divided. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Althea, home, Stewart, in Georgia. But I especially stayed here. I'm not here recording, going live or anything, because it's more, to me, it's more serious than that, and it's more important than to publicize this, because I'm going to speak from my heart. And I never thought that I would be here to speak on behalf of Mr. Mortel. Never, never thought, you know? But for a long, for, since I was contacted, phone calls, emails, texts, a part of me was like, ah! But then reality set in. Reality set in. You know, and you all know I always speak from my heart. You know, we like to throw Christianity around. We like to talk about Christianity, God, and all this. But in the Bible, it says, "Come, let us reason together." It says, "Come, reason together." So where has the reasoning been? Where is the reasoning? Where, where is the reasoning? You know, when I was growing up, I thought I knew more than my parents. I thought I knew, I'm a little child, and I thought I knew everything. How you know so much within a year or two that you've been sitting up there, whoever's been up here in the length of time you've been there? How do you know so much? You're not just affecting one person. You're going to affect the whole community, black, white, whatever color. You're going to affect them. What I do know about Mr. Mortel, and I've shared, I know he has a heart, and I know he has a heart for this community. We all make mistakes. We all have made mistakes. But he has a heart for the community. And who has the experience that he has? Who has that experience? Is he perfect? Heck to the no. He's not. No one up there is perfect. But I know he has the best interest of the community, and he's approachable. I've asked several of you, several of you've asked me, and I've made the time to sit with you, but the ones I've asked before you even came up, never took the time to sit with me and talk. Never. That says a lot. It holds a lot of weight. And you're not just going to change how you feel, you're going to change the whole dynamic of this community, of our community, those that are born and raised here. And I've looked at different posts and comments and everything, and all I see is venom. I just see venom. We got to stop. I would hope you make the right decision, not just for you, but for everyone.
Karen Steger.
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 Sorry.
Still Steger.
For a minute, I thought they put me at the bottom of the pile. My name is Karen Steger, and I already talked a few minutes, I was in the wrong place. But anyway, my address is 71 Southeast.
Did you close the microphone?
Sorry, I'm short. 71 Southeast Harbor Point Drive, Stewart, Florida. I've known Mike Mortel for over 30 years, and we were attorneys against each other for many, many years. And there are a few attorneys that I could stand up here and say with great confidence what an amazing, honest individual that Mike was. And we were in the divorce business, so that is an ugly, ugly business. But frankly, not as ugly as what I have seen the last few weeks happening in our town. I've lived in this town since 1973, and I look all around our country today, and I see the insidious things that are happening, how due process doesn't matter anymore, how people get arrested on our streets, and we can't blow our horns in Martin County now because we'll get arrested, or ticket, sorry. But you all have to think about, we have a constitution, and I know Mr. Reed has, has proposed that he be terminated without cause here today. But two weeks ago, there was just some rumblings of something was wrong, and he did something wrong. We have rights in our country. Mike has not had the ability to even address it, and I haven't heard anything tonight that would even give a reason for an employer to terminate someone at will under the contract, as Mr. Baggett says. So we need to all look at ourselves, every single one of you sitting up there, and all of us in this room, as citizens of Stewart, our beautiful little town, and Mike has been such a big part of it. For years, he's been the mayor, he's been on the council, he's been the city manager, and he's done an amazing job. So for us to sit here tonight and gloss it over and say, you know what, we really don't have anything to, to terminate him for cause, let's just vote on it, and we'll all be done with it. Let's wash our hands. There, but for the grace of God, go every one of us. When we take away the due process that our forefathers years ago fought for, that I stood up in court and fought for, for my clients for 45 years, we are taking away the part of America that's so very important, that makes us different from Russia, and China, and North Korea. And what I've seen happening in this town in the last two weeks is no better than those people. So let's all search our souls. Let's all think real hard about what we're doing, because someday, it won't just be Mike Mortel. It will be one of you. someday, it won't just be Mike Mortel, it will be one of you. And then you'll say, oh, my gosh, we should have taken what's happening in our country and our little town of Stewart seriously.
Helen McBride.
Helen McBride from Flamingo Avenue. In August of 1973, the children on I Bob was already down here, moved to Stewart, Florida. I went to my first PTA meeting in September. They elected, there was four teachers there and the principal. I was elected president of the PTA. Dr. David McMillan called me up and said, "Mrs. McBride, you got to get air conditioning for our kids." Oh, I said, "I have no idea how to do that." He said, "Go to the next school board meeting." And as a dummy, I will tell you, I never been to a public meeting in my life, and I just thought you'd go in and ask for air conditioning, and I'd get it. Let me tell you, when you decide to speak at this podium or run for an election, you better toughen up and get your skin tough. Because let me tell you, the abuse my children had to take, I had to take, the letters to the editors, the phone calls. Bob worked for Belsaf. His job was threatened by his supervisor if he didn't shut me up, go into public meetings at the school board. But my family believed in me, the kids, and the people at Parker, the parents at Parker and that. You run for public office, and, oh, I never called a police department. At night, it was dark, it was at the old art center upstairs. I had cars following me home, blinking their lights and tooting their horns and that. I never was afraid, because I believed in what I was doing. And I never called the police department and said, "Oh, somebody's bothering me." I never took my phone, or I could have got a private line. I never did that. Because when you become a person, when you stand here or you run for office, you better toughen up. It's not an easy job, and you may think, oh, I'm right, and everybody else is wrong. But I feel that some of you, I feel the commissioners are misusing our public police department. They're here to protect all of the people, and I guess you can say. But you also said at the, one of you, the commissioner said, he wasn't answering his phone. Well, if you're a public official, you got to answer your phone. I served on every committee as a volunteer in this city except the LPA. I had one commissioner appoint me to a board. She didn't like the way I voted, and she fired me. It was the first time I ever got fired in my life. And I never got paid. But that was all right, too. But let's go back in 1973, when I moved here. Downtown Stewart was a ghost town. You couldn't come down. Well, I was told, I could go to Greens Department Store, park in front, go in, buy what I needed, and they'd watch me get back in my car with my children, because it was just a bunch of bums and was a thing. Joan Jefferson and Ann McMillan started to revise it. Mike Mortel, I, and a lot of other people just rolled up our sleeves. And look what it is today. You know, you all walked in, well, some of you were here with us, working to make the city much better. But now you're sitting up there, oh, I'm a city commissioner, I can do what I want. I can walk all over the little people. But you're going to be surprised, because we little people don't forget. And I know, and I'm, there's two people here, I'm telling you, the blonde is here, who are going to rip him apart, because I know at one meeting, she, her case was going to the Supreme Court, and Mike was going to end up in jail. Never went to the Supreme Court, Mike. So Mike Mortel has gone through a lot of abuse, much more than I have ever gone through. Now, my time is enough, is it?
Yes, it is. Could you wrap it up, Mr. McBride?
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mary, I didn't hear the thing.
Marge Bonomo.
I'm Marge Bonomo. I live in 1446 Southeast MacArthur Boulevard, just in Martin County. I've known Mike for 30 years, and I am shocked that anyone here, especially people who are new to this, and you are new to this, would be willing to let go of someone with the institutional knowledge and the flat-out love from the community that Mike Mortel has. I've known him for over 30 years. I think he's brilliant. I think any insinuation that firing him for no cause would somehow help him in the job market is comical, because no matter how Mike leaves, if he does leave, I don't think he's going to have trouble finding a job, because there's not a lot of brilliant people around. So I'm just sad that's what's happening, and I think that you should realize the feeling in this community that's coming from this. You know, when people come in new, and they hurt the people who have worked so hard for many years, especially for rather vague reasons, it's something that doesn't go away. It's just a really bad taste.
Walter Lloyd.
Walter Lloyd, Cabana Point Circle, theater with the city, and went on to discuss the contract of Mr. Mortel, as was fully noticed to the public. In that discussion, one commissioner put out his opinion and made a motion so it could be discussed, as it is the only time commissioners can discuss these matters. In respect of Mr. Mortel, they refused to drag his name through the mud in public. Any citizen is free to contact any commissioner for more clarification. We now have the full perspective with all of its irony. At the highest level of perspective, it appears to me that this is a conflict between special interest groups, including local politicians who have previously been voted out, and citizens at large as it pertains to our community, the best, small coastal town. It was the citizens at large who voted in the commissioners prior to this board, who at that time were responsible for all actions of management and staff, including Mr. Mortel. At that time, their choices, actions, and policies were largely acceptable to the special interest groups. But when the citizens at large noticed the results of that group, leaders and staff did not meet their expectations, they acted and replaced them with four out of the five commissioners currently seated on the dais today. Unfortunately, one of the four, being the current mayor, lied to the citizens at large about his motivation for seeking office. Now comes the irony. On one hand, the citizens at large who elect their representatives and expect those representatives to serve them, who pay the salaries of all the city officials and staff, are the same people who provide the livelihoods of the special interest groups who are supposed to serve them as well. On the other hand, special interest groups seeking to build their livelihoods in a community should be serving the citizens at large instead of disrespecting them by calling state-elected officials for the removal of elected local officials when it doesn't fit with their agenda for financial gain. Does this mean that special interest groups, including state-elected officials and Mr. Mortel, are aligned as players with an agenda? It seems Mr. Campini thinks so, as he expressed words on social media. If we're going to save ourselves, Mr. Mortel is the one person that stands between the barbarians and the gate. So I guess citizens at large are the barbarians, and the special interest groups are ourselves. It seems we've lost the perspective of who is supposed to serve who. Last week, we saw a group comprised mostly special interests and community leaders who were voted out, gathered at Maria's Cafe, who, if they only had on yellow shirts, would look much like the same people who gathered about the Bright Line ripoff and are working against the commissioners. Yet, they support Mr. Mortel. These commissioners were duly elected and have stood in integrity to represent this community without compromising to the influence of special interest groups. Their jobs as leaders are about the citizens at large. My prayer is all wisdom and spiritual understanding, and make the right choices for the well-being of the communities you serve. I believe it's time for change and fresh perspective, which more closely reflects the will of people who elected you, whether it be in policy or personnel. Thank you.
Nina Denton.
Good evening, commissioners. My name, I'm short like Karen Steger. My name is Nina Denton, and I am a resident of Stewart. I live off Canor Highway. I also, for a number of years, ran the Martin County State Attorney's Office, where I've had the opportunity to work with Mr. Mortel. Currently, I am working for Carolyn Timmon, your clerk of the court. I know that Ms. Timmon has contacted or attempted to contact the commissioners to voice her feelings on Mr. Mortel, and surprisingly, her opinion and my opinion are pretty much the same. Both of us have worked with Mr. Mortel for many years. He's always been responsive. We haven't always liked his answers, but he was honest, and he was fair. As a resident of the city of Stewart, I'm very concerned that if Mike Mortel is let go, what is going to cost me as a taxpayer? I think that you need to look at everything very plainly and very closely, and it's my opinion that you need to retain Mr. Mortel. Thank you.
Paula Nicoletti.
Thank you. Good afternoon, or evening now. My name is Paula Nicoletti. I live at 1445 Southeast Lark Boulevard in Stewart. And I'd just like to address three things. I am not at many of the commission meetings, but I do watch them on television. And I will ask that you consider your lack of professionalism and the manner in which you speak to each other, the manner in which you speak over each other, is not what our city deserves and expects. I've been married to a city manager for 55 years, and I will tell you what it's like when you decide on a job. There are many cities in the state of Florida, as well as around the United States, that hire city managers. The idea of bringing somebody in every two or three years to take a position because you want to be the one to help elect them is a little bit unrealistic. We sit down, we look at the different cities. Paula's been manager around the United States in different cities, and you have to weigh it. You're buying a home for your family, you're moving your children, you're putting them in school, and you're accepting a position. People need someone now in our city, as Mr. Mortel is, that's well-educated, that has background, because we have serious problems. We have serious situations going on in Martin County and the United States as well. So I ask you to really think about that before you make your decision. And I also share with you that I've been to many commission meetings for many years, and I really believe in my heart that your decision today will make a decision on your future as a commissioner anywhere. Thank you.
Jim Gallegos.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and commissioners, and the citizens of Stewart. I rise tonight to offer my heartfelt endorsement of Michael J. Mortel, and to share why I believe his more than 20 years of dedicated public service to our city deserves our recognition and our confidence. In short, if Stewart needed a Superman, in many ways, we have it in Mike Mortel. For more than two decades, Mike has devoted himself to the city of Stewart in multiple roles, as an elected official, a city attorney, and now as a city manager. He's admitted to the Florida bar, showing his professional credentials that support his work. In his current position, he brings with him institutional knowledge, legal savvy, local relationships, and the full understanding of how this community works, how decisions are made, how the city operates, and how the history and character must be preserved as the city evolves. He deeply understands the interplay of private land, zoning law, and city oversight, which is essential to the thoughtful growth and responsible governance. In short, Mike is not just an administrator, he's a strategic thinker who has helped steer the city through its next chapter. When we consider leadership continuity, Mike stands out. Changing city managers is never cost-free. In fact, public records indicate that the commission, if the commission were to terminate the contract without cause, taxpayers would be exposed to significant cost. His base salary is reported at $225,000. Moreover, one news outlet estimates that the replacement could cost the city over $275,000 when you factor in search costs, onboarding of a successor, and transition disruption. Beyond these figures is the intangible cost of lost institutional memory, slower decision-making while the new person gets up to speed, and potential moral and operational disruption to the city. Mike Mortel has consistently shown a commitment to our community, our community's well-being, rights, and future. Residents have rallied in support, recognizing that he knows Stewart from the inside and the out. When residents speak of leadership that is grounded, that values our citizens' shareholders, that embraces long-term visions, this is the kind of leadership Mike represents. Commissioners, I ask you tonight to weigh Mike Mortel's service, his accomplishments, his extraordinary institutional knowledge, and the cost of change. I ask you to consider, is this a moment for disruption, or is this a moment to support continuity and strong leadership? The time of uncertainty of our city to move forward with confidence, we need someone who knows the terrain, understands the community, and has already invested in it. Mike, thank you for your service, your steadfastness, and your dedication to the city of Stewart. Commissioners, I urge you to reaffirm Mike's, reaffirm your faith in Mike's leadership and to allow him to continue to serve the city with his deep knowledge, steady hand, visionary perspective that he brings. Choosing to keep him at the helm is not just an endorsement of a man, it's an investment in the city's future.
Bob Daniels.
Good evening, Mr. Daniel.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners. I just take a few minutes of your time. I've been in government management for four years.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bob Daniels. I'm currently employed as the town manager in Sewell's Point, your neighbors to the east, and we share your fire department. Anyhow, I'm here tonight because I think it's just important to look at different avenues. And you look at options, and again, I'm just giving you some of the ideas that I've witnessed and have been a part of in my past career of 40 years. And 10 years of that I've been in city or town management. Managers, as you know, we all work at will. So we know there's going to come a day where, you know, there's going to be a change, and we might be part of that change. It doesn't make it any easier to stomach, because we really, you know, and, you know, I haven't lived in Sewell's Point for 40 years or 20 years, but, you know, here you have a gentleman that has lived and been part of the blood, sweat, and tears of this community. And, you know, I realize sometimes things don't go the way that you think they should, and there's other avenues that you can look at. And, you know, when I have a commissioner that doesn't like something, or, you know, we sit down and go through the viewpoints and try to find some common ground on where we can resolve that conflict. And I think it's so important, when you look at the major investment that you have in hiring a manager. I think, you know, looking at other issues like evaluations, and I think your city attorney mentioned performance plans. These are items that you have to your normal employees. Why wouldn't you do for the most important employee that you have, besides your city attorney, but your city manager? And, you know, give him an opportunity to prove to you that he can meet whatever bars you set for him. And that's what a true professional And that's what a true professional does. They try to take the adversity that exists, not only in the city or in a town, they try to make even adversity within the Commission and try to resolve that so everybody can work together. Might not agree with everyone, but you can work together and make this a better place, a better county, and a better state. So I urge you to reconsider your motion and give Mike Mortel what he deserves, and that's to be the best city manager that you'll ever find. Thank you.
David Sharfy. David Sharfy. Sure. Lila Wood.
I'm Lila Wood. My address is 669 Northeast Plantation Road in Stewart. And I moved to Stewart in 2004. And one of the first families I met were the Mortels. I have seen not as many changes as those that have been here 30 or 40 years, but I've seen a lot of beautiful changes. And I know that one source I could always trust with questions, concerns, or any thoughts that I had would be Mike. A phone call, an email, it didn't matter what time of day, a workday, a weekend, he was there. Whether the news on the other end was something I wanted to hear, supportive or not, he was there. I stand before you today, representing not only myself, but a number of very good friends that weren't able to be here tonight. And I represent them, and we're deeply disturbed about the decision of what we consider a freshman Commission. Mike is a lifelong resident of Stewart, of this community, and he's given so much to this community that deserves more respect and transparency. And not only does Mike deserve it, but the citizens that elected you all deserve that transparency and that understanding. Because many of us selected you not expecting something like this would happen and have lost a lot of trust in those that we will not vote for again should we lose Mike as our city manager. This action is not only unjust, in our opinion, it's also what we consider a violation of the principles of fairness, transparency, and accountability to the residents of Stewart that we expect from our elected officials. The city manager has consistently demonstrated dedication, professionalism, and a genuine commitment to the betterment of the city in all of his roles for his past decades of service. To move toward termination without justification or due process, in our opinion, is indefensible. However, should we see transparency? Should we see communication? Should we see our great city manager be given the respect he deserves to sit at a table and work through the process that all of us would deserve when you're terminating someone's, not only prestigious position that they've worked for, but their livelihood, their position in this community, and those that trust you? So I ask all of you, not on behalf of myself, but on behalf of thousands of people out there, to do the right thing and not terminate Mike Mortel. Thank you.
David Sharfy.
Hello, neighbors. Two words come to mind re Item 4. Sorry? David Sharfy, 8 Middle Road, Stewart, Florida. So two words come to mind re our discussion tonight on Item Number 4 here. First one is circus. I'm going to give some definitions. Traveling company of performers, including clowns, acrobats, and trained animals. A spectacle that entertains a mass audience. A circular arena surrounded by tiers of seats used in ancient Rome for contests and spectacles. An extravaganza marked by sensationalism, often with little substance. A frenetic, disorganized, and ridiculous situation. A place or event that feels chaotic or theatrical. A public scene of confusion and uproar. An organized show designed to keep attention without necessarily resolving anything. A big top tent full of noise, color, and distraction. A gathering where everyone is performing, but no one is listening. A ring of endless activity, round and round, with no clear exit. A spectacle meant to dazzle rather than inform. A rotating wheel of applause, noise, and occasional juggling. A public performance that is both serious and not serious at all. A space where the clowns run the tent. A place where everything happens at once and nothing gets done. The other word: theater. A building or area for dramatic performances. Dramatic literature or the art of producing plays. A place or sphere of enactment of significant events. A place rising by steps or gradations, especially for viewing. A place of spectacle or display. A structure where performances take place, often with a stage or audience. An area for events both scripted and improvised. A place where a performance unfolds, whether planned or accidental. A space where roles are played and reality is arranged for effect. A house built not for shelter, but for spectacle. A stage where what is said is not always what is meant. An institution dedicated to showing the world, not as it is, but as it might appear. A room where lights shine on actors, but the audience sits in the dark. A place where one performance and a reality blur into one. A place carefully constructed, illusion with real consequences. Thanks.
Joseph Cooper.
Joe Cooper?
Maybe outside.
Oh, he's outside.
Hello. Hello, everyone. Commissioners, Joseph Cooper, 906 Southeast 9th Street. I thought I had another hour to get up here, but just wanted to come talk about Item 4 that I want to come and just talk about a few things. And I want to start with, one of the things we talk about, you know, the country, we talk about being a Christian nation. And one of the things I want to appeal to everybody on the dais is that if we're going to be a Christian nation, if we're going to follow the steps of Christ, redemption is very, very, very central to His ministry. And so what does it mean to be redeemed? If you find fault in someone, you should redeem them, right? And in a position, as a city manager, is a very important position. If there is something, I think the attorney mentioned about some type of performance review, why not? Because the fact is that Mike Mortel has a lot of institutional knowledge. It's important because our city has grown to where it is now. It needs to be carefully managed, not be reactive or to possibly some wrongdoing. Now, first, there was some wrongdoing, but I guess there's no wrongdoing. So we talked about doing something without cause, and how do you, you know, it reminds me of the story, even when you, there's always been rules and laws in the story of the Samaritan woman who was being accused of adultery. So what Christ, the Pharisees, the teachers of the law were saying, they want to trap Christ. And says, well, don't you know she's committing adultery? He says, yeah, I know. He says, but you know, the first thing we have to do is I want you to figure out, the law says she must be stoned, right? But Christ said, if you haven't done anything wrong, you get to throw the first stone, right? And then what happened is that He said, okay, just don't go do it again. That's what He did. He redeemed her. And because that's the purpose of Christ, He's a Redeemer, right? And so whereas if you have a problem with the way He's managing the city, sit Him down, give Him a plan. And then if He doesn't comply with that plan, then come back and say, we gave you a plan, it didn't work, let's go. So I'm appealing to the dais to take a moment, let the motion settle. I know there's been a lot of things that's happened, whether it's the Costco or these things that have gone on, right? But it's not about retribution. We can't operate like they're doing in DC. We have to have, we should give due process, right? We don't just terminate because they don't go along with the program, right? That's happening. U.S. Attorneys are getting dismissed because they're not going along with the program. Let's not do this here in our little quaint town. I never would have thought, born here in 1968, that we'll get to a point where we can just dismiss people without due process. We shouldn't be doing that. If we got a problem with the city manager, let's bring it to Him. Let's give Him a plan. I think the community will appreciate it, the city will appreciate it, the business leaders, everybody will appreciate it. And I pray, as I walk from the dais, that if we're going to be a Christian nation, if we're going to have prayer before this meeting, just read the Ministry of Christ. Even when it's tough, we got to follow Him and do the right thing. Thank you.
Michael Ponte.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Michael Ponte. I live at 4635 Northeast Indian River Drive in Jensen Beach. This letter is on behalf of the Martin County Realtors of the Treasure Coast, the Martin County Taxpayers Association, Martin County Chapter of the NAACP, the Treasure Coast Builders Association, and the Stewart Martin County Chamber of Commerce. We respectfully request that the Stewart City Commission embrace a policy of regularly providing updates about its ongoing litigation against the state of Florida. This is a central responsibility that the city can and should provide to ensure the public remains informed of the process and how its tax dollars are being used. In August, Stewart joined a lawsuit opposing SB 180. We can appreciate the concerns articulated about the legislation. Even still, anytime a local government enters into litigation, particularly against another government entity, and one as powerful as the state, no less, the onus is on its officials to remain openly and thoroughly accountable to its citizens and greatly intensified. The primary items in need of regular publicly addressing include: Costs. In addition to the initial $10,000 fee to join the suit, what other costs has the city incurred related to the suit? What costs can reasonably be expected to come up as the process unfolds? How will the lawsuit affect the costs of staff and resources? If future expenditures are needed, what is the spending threshold? Timeline. Litigation is infamously unpredictable and time-consuming. How long of illegal engagement does the city anticipate? Unintended Consequences. Stewart is a recipient of state grants. Was any inventory taken prior to filing the litigation as to the number of grants the city receives from the state? How many city services rely on state grants, and to what extent? What do these grants come up for renewal? Is there a plan in place to address potential funding shortfalls? Is there a plan to address potential shortfall should any existing or needed state grants be imperiled by the litigation process? Such questions are particularly heightened following the strong signals by the Stewart Commission majority recently to remove city manager Mike Mortel. Having also served as city attorney, Mr. Mortel has demonstrated his impressive legal skills for the city on numerous occasions, most notably following discovery of the contamination of its groundwater and water supply. Mr. Mortel successfully guided the city's role in a landmark litigation against 3M, resulting in a $10 billion global settlement. To risk losing such a proven legal knowledge while currently engaged in litigation seems shockingly short-sighted. As our nation's founding documents attest, governance is possible only through the consent of the governed. The consent is demonstrated through transparency, accountability, and respect for how residents' tax dollars are managed. We sincerely appreciate you honoring such responsibilities by promptly and publicly keeping the public aware of these important matters regarding the lawsuit against the state. Thank you.
John Gonzalez.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Gonzalez, Villa Street here in the City of Stewart. I am also a business owner here. I'm a Stewart resident and business owner. I hope that my thoughts and opinions will hold some weight in your decision-making. I'm here to beg you not to fire Mike Mortel. I spoke to some of you about my thoughts on this matter. Our town is a model of great government until recently. Most important to me is the knowledge that when I get up in the morning, my garbage is going to get picked up on time, my recycling is going to get picked up on time. We have a well-trained and responsive fire, rescue, and police department. That our infrastructure is modern and efficient. I know that when there's a hurricane, all of your employees will be here on the ground the minute it clears. I know that they'll be helping our families and the people that surround them get their lives back together. More importantly, I know that our Public Works Department will be pumping out the lift stations to make sure that we can still flush our toilets after the hurricane, which, if you've ever been here, that's one of the more important things that happens after a hurricane. I saw Mike Mortel pitching in in my neighborhood after the hurricanes. And I know that he and his employees, your employees, our employees, are always willing to help the citizens of this town. I love the fact that when I walk down the town and I see employees of the City of Stewart proudly wearing their shirts, and I wave, they smile back because they like working here. Your process today is flawed. If you have a problem with an employee, you should follow standard procedures, but apparently some of you do not even know what proper protocol is. Meet with the employee, take an HR manager with you, discuss efficiency, and work up an action plan to bring the employee up to your standards. Document the process and then make an informed decision on how to move forward. Your actions at the last meeting were deplorable and an embarrassment to the residents of this community. I know you have a Doge mentality, some of you have a Doge mentality and plan to fire countless employees. So be it. But are you really weighing the consequences of your actions? Do you know that the employees' morale is at an all-time low, in my opinion? I assume resumes are being sent out to everyone in your crosshairs. Who will replace them? After actions like this, who would want to come here to replace someone? Prior to your administration, this town was running perfectly. Now you're beginning to see the folly of your actions. Soon, if you fire Mike, you will begin to see the unintended consequences of your egregious actions. Employees will leave, services will become inferior, and the happiest seaside town in America will forever change its desirability. Finally, you have the ability to do the right thing tonight. Some of you quote Scripture to justify your position. I would simply ask you to apply the golden rule: Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Keep Mike, develop a plan with him, and department heads, document the goals and objections, and measure the outcomes. That's how you run a successful and happy organization.
Nick Blunt. Nick Blunt.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Nick Blunt, a proud resident of the City of Stewart. Before my comments, though, I did have one comment, just on a procedural comment. This was not advertised as a Commission action. It's under discussion and deliberation. So I'm wondering how you can even take a vote on what was made tonight as a motion. You know, I've worked with the City of Stewart staff in so many situations for the entire 51-plus years that I've lived in Stewart. As a local operations manager for FPL, and for 12 years as FPL's Governmental Affairs Manager, I specifically had to interface with each city manager throughout that period. I don't know how many city managers that has been. I have seen firsthand the importance of a city manager who knows the history of the city, has served in multiple roles for the city, and is familiar with the vast number of regulations that the city must comply with. I saw this as a member of the city's Charter Committee. And more recently, while serving as a city commissioner, I gained a strong appreciation of the dedication that city managers have toward doing what is best for the city. It is very rare that an outsider steps into that role and succeeds. There is absolutely no reason for the current Commission to even think about going down that road. Mr. Mortel has and continues to conscientiously and proficiently serve the City of Stewart as its leader. There are so many more important matters that you, as There are so many more important matters that you, as city commissioners, need to spend your time and effort on rather than creating turmoil by changing managerial leadership only for change's sake. The residents of Stewart will be grateful. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Mark Breckville?
Mr. Breckville, do you wish to comment on the assertion that it's inappropriate that the motion is made?
I've already given my opinions that if you're going to do it without cause, we can do that tonight. It was properly published. My concerns that I raised at the last meeting, I think we've cured.
Okay.
Now, I've given an opinion. If it's gonna be because of cause, we need to come back at a future meeting and address it that way.
Thank you. Mr. Breckville? Mark Breckville, 406 Southeast Finney Drive, Stewart, Florida, right near a number of you people. I live right down the street. You probably wanna kick me out of the neighborhood. But anyway, I just wanna say, you know, I come to these things, just like we had the Seacoast thing, and you see all these people here, and they're all our friends, they're all our neighbors. We may disagree about stuff, and this would actually be fun if it wasn't such a serious thing, because we all love each other. We love the city of Stewart. We all, you know, outside, get along great. And all of the Commissioners up here, I have immense respect for. I tried to run for office. I know how hard it is, and I know what you did, and you had support, and I appreciate that. And I think you guys got elected because you're leaders. You're the leaders. It's not Mike that's on, is the one that's on trial or as a leader. It's the commission. Your job is to lead, and if you can't take somebody who's got that kind of tools and work with him to get him to do what you want to do, then let him go at that point in time. But that's a failed leadership, and you guys are good, you guys can be good at this. You are good at this. You're leading, you're taking paths, you're doing what you were elected to do. Do it here. Take this man, give him an opportunity to figure out what he has done that you don't want, set up course for him to improve, and follow that action. You guys can do that, and it's not a thing to run away from. And I will tell you, just like others have said, it will be much easier for you to take Mike and get him what you want because you know who he is and you know what he wants and what he's doing and what you want changed than to bring somebody in new, hire him from someplace we don't know anything about, they don't know anything about us. You'll pass the next election before you've really got that person in place. So I beg you, be the leaders you were hired to be, because I think you are. You beat me, so I want you to be better than me. And so be that leader and turn it around, all right? That's all I'm asking.
Bill West?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Bill West, 1819 Northwest Sans Souci Street, Stewart, resident of Martin County. I think of our community, and I think of it as family, I think of it as a marriage. We're all committed. You have to invest in that marriage, you have to mutually support each other, and you have to show up, sometimes for decades. This gentleman here, I've been watching him show up for decades. We share something so painful, we haven't even been able to be friends. And I wanna share a verse that I shared then that has oddly been on my heart since this came up. A wife of noble character who can find, she is worth far more than rubies. Her husband has full confidence in her and lacks nothing of value. She brings him good, not harm, all the days of her life. She selects wool and flax and works with eager hands. She is like merchant ships, bringing her food from afar. She gets up while it is still night, and she provides food for her family and portions for her female servants. She considers a field and buys it. Out of her earnings, she plants a vineyard. She sets about her work vigorously, her arms are strong for her tasks. She sees that her trading is profitable and her lamp does not go out at night. In her hand, she holds the distaff and grasps the spindle with her fingers. She opens her arms to the poor and extends her hands to the needy. When it snows, she has no fear for her household, for all of them are clothed in scarlet. She makes coverings for her bed, she is clothed in fine linen and purple. Her husband is respected at the city gate, where he takes his seat among the elders of the land. She makes linen garments and sells them and supplies the merchants with sashes. She is clothed with strength and dignity, and she can laugh at the days to come. She speaks wisdom and faithful instruction is upon her tongue. She watches over the affairs of her household and does not eat the bread of idleness. Her children arise and call her bless. Her husband also, Annie praises her. Many women do noble things, but you surpass them all. Charm is deceptive and beauty is fleeting, but a woman who fears the Lord is to be praised. Honor her for all that her hands have done and let their works bring her praise at the city gate. Mike, you are to be commended for your selfless lifetime of service to your community. I am personally grateful, and I sincerely hope that you're here. You have much more work to do for us, sir.
William Rudge?
Good evening, Commissioners and fellow citizens. I am here to formally submit-
Reintroduce yourself, sir, please.
William Rudge, 1701 Southwest Palm City Road, Stewart, Florida. I am speaking to formally notify you that the case of City versus Rudge was not lawfully resolved. It was procedurally buried by the current city manager, who filed a motion to dismiss with prejudice in federal court while appearing pro se on behalf of the city of Stewart. The current city manager is a licensed attorney, but in this matter, he was also a named defendant and a necessary witness. Federal law prohibits any party, attorney or not, from representing a municipal party pro se while being a litigant. This appears inconsistent with the 11th Circuit precedent and raises a conflict of interest issue now under federal review. The case was closed April 24 without evidentiary hearing despite 197 filings and documented constitutional violations. The federal magistrate admitted she could not find the original docket confirming judicial concealment. Now, the 11th Circuit has formally reopened the case under appeal, citing procedural sabotage, denial of due process, and conspiracy to commit extrinsic fraud. This is not adjudication, it is strategic burial now under federal review. Further, the former magistrate, who previously served as city attorney and city manager, appears to have coordinated or knowingly allowed this concealment. While he did not act as magistrate in the Rudge case, he did preside over enforcement actions in other cases, ruling on matters that helped to create while serving as city attorney and city manager. This dual role also raises serious concerns about conflict of interest, procedural sabotage, and judicial misconduct. The applicable federal statutes and criminal exposure of the above city officials, actions city personnel are USC 241, conspiracy to deprive constitutional rights; USC 1001, false statements to federal officials; USC 1951, Hobbs Act, extortion under color of official right with using armed police force; Rico liability and treble damages; USC 18371, conspiracy to defraud the United States. I am submitting this record as cause for termination of the current city manager without severance compensation. Any payout under the circumstances would reward misconduct and expose taxpayers to further liability, when he should be investigated, arrested, and tried for his alleged criminal activities. And I hereby request formal review by the city commission, appropriate oversight bodies. The full investigation that this cries for will undoubtedly uncover many more illicit activities and individuals, as well. It's the commission's responsibility to take a proactive lead in this investigation and put an end to this widespread systematic corruption. Thank you.
Kathy Cabree-Peters?
My name is Kathy Cabree-Peters. I've lived in the city of Stewart my entire life, since 1957. That's 68 years. My parents owned and operated Castle Lumber Company for many years, likely before most of you had taken your first breath. I personally have owned and operated a business in the city of Stewart since 1984. I own a residence, a vacant lot, and two commercial properties. I've had the privilege of working with Mike since he began practicing law in 1990. Mike is the consummate professional. He has worked tirelessly on the city board of adjustment, the LPA, city commissioner, mayor, city attorney, and now city manager, dedicating himself to this city for two decades. I'm frankly outraged that you think, after such a short stint, that you know better than those that have gone before you. I'm equally concerned that you violated the fundamental tenets of the Sunshine Law and you want us to think it was sheer happenstance, that you make your motion for his resignation under the guise of reviewing his contract without notice to Mike, the other two Commissioners, and more importantly, the taxpayers who you are supposed to be serving. Since one of your complaints is that you didn't have a voice in the selection process, should we be worried that your next motion is going to be to remove the city clerk or the city attorney because they were appointed before you were on the board? What's gonna happen to city morale? As for a citizen that's so publicly, so concerned, Mr. Mortel and his paralegal are working on private cases while on city time, I can tell you that I am involved in the 19th Judicial Circuit legal arena day in and day out. In the 20-plus years that Mike Mortel has been on or involved in city government, I have seen him on one, let me repeat, one private law case. Yet, this concerned citizen is not at all concerned that you guys are probably meeting outside the sunshine? I'm really concerned about that. Your proposed actions will cost this city hundreds of thousands of dollars in severance pay and recruitment costs and frankly, possible litigation. You can bet I will not forget this at election time. Mike may not be perfect, none of us are. I'd ask that you get off the voting block, that you be an independent thinker, that you think on your own, and that you perhaps heed Mr. Daniels, I believe is his name, suggestions from the city of, or the town of Souls Point. In closing, Mike, I am so sorry you're having to go through this after all you've done for the city. You don't deserve it, and neither do the taxpayers of the city of Stewart.
Ed Lucenti?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Ed Lucenti. I live on Seminole Street in Stewart. You've heard a lot about the contributions and experience that Mike Mortel brings to his job. I'm here to talk about process. I'm here to talk about how we govern and how we decide. The motion made by Sean Reed, our newest commissioner of 14 months, appeared on the agenda without notice, without a documented performance review, without a formal investigation, and without a public hearing. No evidence has been presented to residents of Stewart. No rationale has been shared, and yet the commission is poised to vote on a matter that could destabilize our city's leadership. I read in the local paper a quote from Commissioner Collins where he cited that the reason was increasing friction over the past six months between Mortel and the majority of the commission. But let's be clear, that so-called majority is a voting bloc. It includes Collins and two relatively new Commissioners who repeatedly align against the two most experienced Commissioners that are part of the progress that we've made in the past. The pattern of three-to-two votes is not evidence of a broad institutional friction, it's evidence of a narrow coalition that pushes decisions without the benefit of the experience, consensus, or public engagement. That's not a majority. That is what I would call a maneuver, one that could and should generate friction, and it should not be the basis for removing a charter officer. Thus, this scenario presents a leadership paradox. Understandable. Now, it does raise an important question and invites reflection on several key issues: the dynamics of leadership within the commission, the impact of different viewpoints that they can have on the decision-making process, and the procedures by which these significant decisions are reached by our local government. It also poses the question of government transparency. The citizens have the right to know what their government is doing and how decisions are made. What kind of a precedent are we setting? Removing a charter officer without cause, without process, and without public input. Mayor Rich, you've had a longstanding reputation as a voice for order, fairness, and for institutional transparency. I implore you to use that voice now. Delay the vote, call for a public hearing, and invite residents of Stewart to weigh in. Let's proceed with clarity and not conflict.
Dennis Steelman? Did you say that again? Dennis Steelman?
My name is Dennis Steelman. I live at 101 Southeast Seminole Street in Stewart. Over the past 10 or so years, I've had many dealings with Mr. Mortel, always positive. I've always found him to be extremely knowledgeable and available, whether in person, by phone, or by email. If anybody should question Mr. Mortel's knowledge and his history of the city, I recommend you view the Treasure Coast podcast in which he was interviewed a few months ago. I am sure that his extensive knowledge of the city, legal matters, and procedures have saved the city millions of dollars over the course of his career. In 25 years as an engineering manager, I've had many disagreements with other managers, team members, and subordinates. Never once was my inclination to fire them. Usually, open discussion resulted in a superior solution. As a manager, I would never consider discarding such a valuable resource as Mr. Mortel. One thing I found that's very disturbing and important, though, was the threats against Mr. Reed. That is intolerable. We live in a nation of laws. In conclusion, though, I do find the lack of transparency on the part of the commission disturbing.
Jeff Doherty?
My name is Jeff Doherty. I live on Riverside Drive, and I have been a property owner, taxpayer, for a couple decades, almost 25 years in the city. I'm a voter, I'm a resident, and I say all those things. I've been a member of a couple volunteer committees in the city, and I say that only because I care about the city. I'm involved in the city. I'm not just someone passing through. And in all those years, I've dealt with many people, and from a Commissioner's point of view, back to Jim Christie and Carl Kruger and Gene Rifkin, all the way through today's commission, I've dealt with managers. I've gone from Dave Collier and Dan Hudson, Paul Nicoletti, Mike Mortel, and I'll share some of- Nicoletti, Mike Mortel, and I'll share some other local Managers, Taryn Crisda and Don Donaldson at the county. And the reason I bring that up, one thing that's very important to a leader, is continuity and local knowledge. Every one of the Managers I just said has previously worked for the city or county before they became a city or county manager. Every single one, I said, in the last 15, 20 years. The one exception is when you went out to Virginia, or whatever state it was, Mr. Ross was here less than a year, was fired. I see a pattern that local knowledge is invaluable, and that's what we have here. And I can tell you in the decades that I've been here, I've dealt with Mr. Mortel on different levels. I've dealt with him as a private attorney. I dealt with him as a City Commissioner, as a Mayor, as a City Attorney, and as a City Manager. And I say that both from perspective of myself as a private citizen. I was a small business owner, and I've worked for Martin County for the last 15 years. And we interact with the city on different levels. So, putting all that together, I can tell you every time I dealt with Mr. Mortel, he's been available, which is hugely important. He's been professional, and he's been knowledgeable. And you mix those together with local knowledge, you do not replace that overnight. And I can tell you that the concerns are, if you do, as a financial consideration as a taxpayer, the Board has decided to withhold some funds for some employees and have to lay them off. At the same time, we're going to go into whatever the debt is, thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars replaced. And that being said, what you don't know is the cost, not money, but it'll show up differently in morale, in operational efficiency, and continuity that will be lost if Mr. Mortel is lost. So I thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate that you would do the best thing for the taxpayers, residents, and citizens, and that's to maintain the continuity with Mr. Mortel. Thank you.
Robin Cartwright?
Good evening, Commissioners. You have a very hard decision in front of you, and I don't envy your position, but I want to review a couple of things. Mr. Ross was mentioned, and you're right. In 2018, Mr. Ross was told he could either resign or be terminated, and he was not afforded this opportunity where people were rallied in his support. Maybe it's because he wasn't from here, but some things about that situation have since come out. But the big problem here is that the focus of this discussion should be about accountability and ethics, and what is legal is not always ethical. Mr. Mortel has used his position to provide preferential treatment to some in the community and not others. We can look at what happened with the Airbnb on Isla Street versus what happened to somebody like the Ruggages. Pushing for the lot split on Osceola that ended up being listed with his wife could be a pure coincidence, but the optics of that are very unfortunate and a huge conflict of interest. When it came to Brightline, there was a discussion that there would be absolutely no financial obligation to the citizens of Stewart, and yet, in the very next day in the county meeting, there was a discussion by their county administrator about our responsibility as taxpayers and what we were responsible for that the city had committed to. That was not part of the discussion. And all of this discussion about the sharing of institutional knowledge, I get it. Mr. Mortel is very affable, and he has a lot of information. But I would say to you that if he's truly the leader that everybody here says that he is, this staff is ready to run with or without him. This staff is ready to do their job. The garbage pickups will continue. The water treatment will continue. All of these services will still continue. If he's truly the leader that everyone says, then he's done his job preparing this staff in our community for what comes next. And I want to also address that employees are not being fired. I've heard that a couple of times. From what I understand, it's open positions that are not being refilled, and that's a very different conversation. So tonight, I just want to remind you that the City Manager has a very important job, absolutely, but they are setting the standards and what everybody is supposed to follow. So when you make your decision tonight, it's not about any one singular thing, or maybe it is. It's about the totality of the behavior and what we expect from a leader in that position, because it's not fair to the employees that they are not being afforded the same opportunities and the same set of standards. Thank you.
Karen Hall?
Good evening, Karen Hall. 1701 Southwest Palm City Road. Thank you for your service. I appreciate it. I am so grateful that I live in a country where I can redress my grievances to my government, and I'm so grateful and proud to be an American. I've been voting in Martin County since 1992, raised two beautiful daughters here, so this is my home. I feel like the luckiest girl in the world to live here. I want to, you know, we're all dogpiling. Everybody's dogpiling on Mike, but I want people to understand, and Commissioners to understand, he didn't do this on his own, okay? You know, he is not the head of the snake, okay? He, and just in my situation, he and Nicoletti and Kilbride were all involved, but Mike doesn't do this stuff on his own. There's a network. So when someone last week said, oh, we got to cut the cancer, well, yes, we could do this surgery, but there's a lot more surgery to be done, like Nicoletti, like people at the Martin County. So there's always going to be surgeries. We always have to get the cancer out. But I think the main thing is not about the money, how much is it going to cost us, what about it costs us the harm that happens to residents just because of misrepresentation and using the, as an attorney, using the law as a weapon rather than a protection. And I guess the thing with us is, I feel like we turned out great. I have one kid that's an attorney and one kid that Duke, so we had really bad things happen, and Mr. Mortel was responsible with Nicoletti. But we, look what God has done for our family. He saved us, and he protected us, and he showed us favor. So I love Mr. Mortel as a person. I just would, may God bless and keep Mike Mortel far away from City Hall. Thank you.
Andrea Creach, or Audra, I'm sorry, Audra Creach.
Good evening, Audra Creach. I live in Palm City, but I work in the city of Stewart as a land use and zoning attorney. I would be considered the special interests that have been thrown around, apparently, so guilty as charged, but I live in this town, and live in this county, and actually live with whatever it is I get approved. So that's one thing. But I appreciate the comments that were made at the beginning of this, as far as we're not trying to be on teams. If we are effective in actually doing that, which I hope we somehow manage to do, then we have seen some significant maturity happen in the limited time that you all are in office. And I understand that that maturity has been bought and paid for because it is not easy to be where you are. There's a choice that I made long ago that I would prefer never to be where you are, so I appreciate your service, and I do understand it. So, last meeting, I didn't know what was going to happen. I came up here and gave my spiel about the totality of one man's service to a community, because I am used to dealing with worst-case scenarios. I deal with them every day. I get up every day trying to figure out how to make worst-case scenarios less bad. So when I saw the discussion and deliberation item out of nowhere, I immediately went, oh my goodness, we are facing something that none of us have ever seen before, the ending of a City Commissioner that has been within the city for over 25 years. One of the most insidious parts of caring so very much, and I know that you all care, you wouldn't be here if you didn't care, one of the insidious parts about caring so very, very much is that you're more likely to see what you want to see. You are much more likely to see what you are looking for. Young attorneys face it all the time. We want so badly to do well for our clients, and we want so badly for the answers to turn out well for our clients, that we might misread them when we're young. We might read them differently or interpret them in ways that maybe are a little of a stretch, because we want our clients to be okay. I think you all are seeking something here that does not exist, because you want to see it. A large conspiracy? Someone who you can get rid of and somehow make everything better? Supposedly taking away a cancer? I think you're seeing something that does not exist, because you want to see it. So with all due respect, I would greatly appreciate it if you rethought what it is you are truly seeing, because I see someone who has spent a very long time in the city of Stewart. Has Mike Mortel changed, or have you? Thank you.
Margaret Bromfield?
Good evening, Ms. Bromfield.
Good evening, Margaret Bromfield, 1201 Southeast Sendollar Lane. I made sure to write my notes, because I've written my speech like five times. Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank the City Manager for his service to the city of Stewart over the years. Thanks for showing up at events in the community. Thanks for being gracious during those times when you were publicly insulted. Thank you for your professionalism, even in this last attempt. While the basis and the evidence for this current attack on you have not been made known to the public, something was said since I wrote this, but anyway, I want to say that I'm quite sure you have ruffled a few feathers, and maybe even said some things that you later determined could have been stated differently. But my question to you would be, have you ever intentionally put your pen to the paper to defraud and hurt the citizens of this community? Have you ever stolen anything from the people you are here to serve? From my observation of you in the community, I have seen a brilliant, knowledgeable man who is genuinely engaged and invested in the well-being of the constituency. I see a man who comes to the NWACP along with his wife, not just for photo ops, a man who shows up and engage with the people. He stays. He talks. He listens with an open mind. I want to take it a bit further and say, even if you have slipped and have done something wrong, how dare we throw the baby out with the bathwater? I am reminded of this scripture, which was quoted earlier by Stephen Cooper, in the scripture where Jesus, he was on the Mount of Olives, and the scribes and Pharisees brought unto him a woman taken into adultery, and when they had set her in the midst, they say unto him, "Master, this woman was taken in the midst of adultery. In the very act, it was caught in action." Now Moses in the law command us that such should be stone, but what saith thou? This they said tempting him, that they might have to accuse him, but Jesus stooped down and with his finger wrote on the ground, as though he did not hear them. So they continued asking him. He lifted himself up and said, "He that without sin among you, let him first cast a stone at her." And again, he stooped down and wrote on the ground, and they which heard it, being convicted by their own conscience, went out one by one, beginning the eldest even unto the last, and Jesus was left alone, and the woman standing in the midst. When Jesus lifted up himself and saw none but the woman, he said unto her, "Woman, where are thine accused? Have no men condemned thee?" And she said, "No, Lord, no one." Jesus said, "Neither do I. Mr. Mortel, neither do I condemn thee." God bless you.
Robert Stankovich? Robert Stankovich?
I have some packets I'd like to hand out. I got a bunch of them. Some are for the press, and some are for you guys.
Will you introduce yourself, sir, and begin your remarks?
Yep. Sure. Okay, it's Robert Stankovich, 1251 Southwest Lawrence Lane. I want to just start off by asking for a pension freeze for Mr. Mortel, Paul Nicoletti, and also Kilbride. And what this relates to, like, for my case, you know, I did a lot split, and I had a lot of problems. I had to jump through a whole bunch of hoops, and it cost me tremendous money, you know, tremendous time. It's been since 2021 I've been trying to get my permit back, which was never legally closed. But where it ended off is, Mr. Mortel wanted me to trench my property from Village Oaks Community, which is dumpster water and parking lot water into Poplin Creek, which would have been an EPA issue. It would pollute Poplin Creek. So, that was one thing. And then, I was also asked to do a water test for, a rainwater test for Community Oaks, which is, you know, a community I don't even own, and which would have cost $38,000 to get my permit, you know, when I originally had a permit with a site plan that was stamped by the city. Everything was done, and I had a stop order.
You can continue.
So, so for my case, you know, I can't jump through hoops, you know, I can't pollute Poplin Creek, and I'm not going to spend $38,000 on a water test for a community just to get my building permit back. It's just ridiculous. It's been years. So, on top of that, the Building Department blew hat in, in a Commissioner hearing, brought up a picture of a trust, which was a scrap piece of trust, and presented it to you guys. And, you know, it was like scrap wood. And I had two sets of trusses, you know. One was made wrong, was a scrap, and then I had the right trusses, so the right trusses were up. So there was misrepresentation there. And then, Jody Kluger changed my parcel IDs, so she would transfer my fines from the 1251 address to the new address in order to do a lien foreclosure. So they did a rush magistrate hearing to do a lien foreclosure and adjudicate fines without a consent order. And, you know, right now, I probably have over $300,000 in fines. So, the fines, which is a big issue with Paul Nicoletti, because, you know, he's supposed to be impartial, but yet, he was six years City Attorney, six years City Manager. So how could he be impartial, you know? He can't. It's a constitutional violation. He can't, you know, issue fines. So, the whole thing has just been, it's racketeering to make money, just like the Ruggages. It's been 16 years to date, October 27th, 16 years ago, that the city filed an injunction on a dead person, on a dead attorney. The attorney was dead for months, and they filed an injunction. So, it's bad. I mean, it's really, there's so many deep-rooted things. I mean, everyone sees things on the surface, but it's really, this broke up my marriage, you know, to have the pressure of, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in fines. You know, to have the pressure of, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars on fines, it broke up my marriage. It broke up Karen's marriage. And you'll see in all these documents what's been happening. You know, there's things about Mr. Martel perjuring himself, you know, wondering why, you know, he just continues to not tell the truth. It's in there, it's in this packet. So it's, that's all court documents. It's not a matter of opinion, it's, it's what's there. So people don't see what's going on. And I've had it. I mean, I'm not going to spend, I'm not going to pollute Poplin Creek, and I'm not going to spend $38,000 on a rainwater test that, you know.
Thank you, sir.
Ridiculous.
Thank you, sir.
But everything's in the packet and you'll see.
And we have received your information.
Good evening, commissioners and neighbors. My name is Clay Sharer, Clay the Tree Man Sharer, actually. 200 Southeast Four Winds Drive. I think it would be hard to add to anything that has been said tonight by many others, urging you all to reconsider the motion or the consideration of Mike's role. So I would just urge you to think about fairness, transparency, and a bit of due process. And all of you are elected with that in mind by the voters, so please keep that in mind tonight. I share the board, the CRB, the Community Redevelopment Board, with a gentleman named Mark Recville, who's here tonight. And he doesn't always say smart things, but actually, two weeks ago, at this meeting, which by the way, I wasn't here two weeks ago, I watched the tape, and that's how I know how smart Mark is. So he urged you even then, when it wasn't really clear that it was on the agenda, to, he felt like it was a premature motion. And I think that's probably relevant even tonight. If you all are receiving new information, like maybe we just heard and other things, then I would, I would just urge you to reflect on that. Obviously, that's going to take some time to go through that. We've heard a lot of good things about what Mike does, and even you all mentioned two weeks ago, the contributions that Mike performs in his role for the city and for the city. If there are issues that need to be addressed, surely you could find a better way to work with Mike on those than the current motion. I would just suggest that you reconsider that. Yeah, so I would urge you to vote against the motion. Please demonstrate that you're, that you listen to the citizens. You've heard many tonight, and I'm sure you've, you've received other emails and so on. Please demonstrate that you hear us and that you listen.
Lucy McGuire.
They don't hear him outside.
Good evening. My name is Lucy McGuire. And before I begin, let me clarify something, because I have been mocked online previously by one of the commissioners about the fact that I live in East Port St. Lucie, which is currently what I can afford as a local, because otherwise I would live in the city of Stewart. So let me explain why I believe I have a right to share my point of view here with you all tonight. I am here tonight because I care deeply about this community. I was born in Stewart, right down the road, raised in Jensen Beach, went to Jensen Beach Elementary, Stewart Middle, and Jensen Beach High School. I'm a local leader. I founded a local nonprofit based in Martin County that continues to serve local underserved students. I own a local social media agency that provides free educational classes for small businesses in Martin County and beyond. And I have held multiple leadership positions with community organizations based in Martin County, all of this done for free as a volunteer. And I serve this community on a daily basis and have done so for years and continue to do so, just like yourselves. And I appreciate all of you for the time and effort that you put into this community. I'm not a part of any special interest groups. I am simply a concerned native citizen who would love, who loves this city and spends my dollars here and supports my community whenever I can. I'm so disappointed. It's painful to watch our elected officials handle this situation and so many others with such little respect for the people that they serve sometimes. And one of you reminded us to act like adults and speak, and as we speak before you, as I speak before you, truthfully, so much of the childish behavior I have seen has come from some of the commissioners here. And I don't want to say that, I don't say that lightly. I expect, and we expect more. And a few of you have said, whether it's the right decision, this is our decision, whether it's right or wrong. That's not leadership. Leadership is listening. The community is here tonight telling you this decision is wrong, and it's your job to hear us. Mr. Martel is one of the most informed, experienced, and respected public servants this city has ever had. He comes to every meeting with facts, history, and context that few others could provide, and has over 20 years of knowledge that has served in every position that you guys currently hold. According to my knowledge, he has more experience than all of you combined. That matters, and that experience has weight. To lose him isn't just to lose a city manager, it's to lose the very wisdom that has helped build Stewart into the city that it is today. This decision doesn't just cost our city financially, but more importantly, it will cost our city its integrity. You are here to serve the people and our community, right? Well, the people are here telling you what they want. We are not asking, we are pleading. Are you listening? If you truly care about this community, prove it. Listen. Reconsider. Do what's right. You are not here to serve your interests or your opinions, you are here to serve the city and every single resident, native, local who lives, works, and plays here. I urge you to make the right decision. Leadership is not about power, it's about principle and responsibility. No one here is perfect, but we can all do our best. And right now, the best and right thing to do is to keep Mr. Martel. Thank you, Mr. Martel, for your service, and the city is lucky to have you, and hopefully we will get to keep you. To the commission, I'll leave you with this, he deserves better, and frankly, so do we. So please make the right decision and do better.
Hi, Tim Hernandez. I've encountered many elected and appointed officials over the past 40 years as a planner, as a community development director, as a regional planning commissioner, as a CRA board member, as a developer, and as a college professor. I've met very few with as much intellect, talent, dedication, and obvious love for their community as Mr. Martel. He clearly puts his heart and soul into every decision, looks out for the city's best interests at all times. City managers are like football or basketball coaches. They're let go all the time. Occasionally, it's deserved, but often it's for the wrong reason or for no articulated reason at all. Many times, a new coach or manager is not an improvement, but there are often other deeper issues at play. Stewart's a wonderful place in no small part because of Mr. Martel's stewardship. In this day and age, it's rare to find someone to run your city with deeper ties to it than Mr. Martel has with Stewart. I've never really seen a turnout like this anywhere. I've seen city managers get fired before. I've sat in the audience when it happened. But I kind of wonder, who could perform the job more effectively than Mr. Martel? Will the cream of the crop even apply when they read the vague reasons for this decision? Somebody always wants a job, but you may not want that somebody. I urge you to retain Mr. Martel because, in my opinion, you already have the best. There's no reason to settle for less. Thank you.
Good evening. Olga Hamilton, 311 Southwest 3rd Street, Stewart, Florida. The city manager has a very, very important job overseeing all the departments. But these supervisory responsibilities should be done by the city manager, and of course, most of the city managers that do it, according to the all-applicable laws, not just cities' policies and local ordinance, but also federal and state laws. When the city manager implements these laws selectively, deliberately, what happens? It happens mistrust, and it happens mismanagement, and especially as it happens, mismanagement on the federally funded program. When the state of Florida awarded the city of Stewart with the federal funds, they expect, they expect a report how this tax base money is spent. When the participants on these federally funded programs notify everyone, and this community development block grant administration, and the grant management company that hired by the city, and the city manager, that mismanagement happened, fraud happened, and fraudulent documents happened, it's all there. And then the city manager decides to cover up everything. When the city manager has a document, the sub-grant agreement between the city and the state that states all the laws, federal and Florida's laws, and courts, and regulations, and they all state, the city is responsible to supervise not only contractors, but consultants, and everyone who paid from the federal funds. And when it's not happened, what happened? It happens mismanagement of the federal funds. And the city of Stewart, because, I am sorry, because, you know, I have it all on my website. I have all documents. The problem is, when the city manager writes one thing in one month, then says another thing in one month, and then I write to the state of Florida, and state of Florida says me, "Oh, we never said it." That's not what we meant. And when the city manager drags into his false statement the state employee name, I had to write the letter to the state of Florida about it as well. It's, we're all talking about transparency. Talk about transparency. Whether you continue contract with the city manager or not, whether we can work it out, or as at last meeting on September 22nd, when the city manager and grant administrator in collusion were lying about non-existent cobra roof ridge vent on metal standing seam roof, and the money was paid for work was, was not performed, for work that have to be redone, when it all could be managed in the first days when we notified the city of Stewart about the mismanagement on the program. Talking about transparency, please be transparent and tell people what you know.
Thank you, Mrs. Hamilton.
Good evening. My name is Robert Hamilton, 1895, Church of Stewart. You know, I think what we're really talking about here tonight is truth and accountability. What went on, on our project was terrible. Cost us tremendous amount of money because the city of Stewart, Mr. Martel, did not follow the directive sent by the state of Florida. Not once, not twice, three times the state of Florida sent a directive on our 130-year-old historical property. It was ignored. The first December of '23 letter, five months before the job started, that letter was hidden. And ultimately, we found that out in November of '24. And to reiterate what Olga just said, the reality is, is federal funds were used to pay the contractor for work that was never done. There is no roof ridge vent system on that building. There is not. Mr. Martel lied on October 13th, and so did Antonio Jenkins. And if you were given wrong information, again, Mr. Martel, you could have turned around, as I said, 200.320. I wouldn't be here tonight, because that's procurement, and that is allowed to be done, given these circumstances of the damage to our historical building, the damage to my reputation, which is fine, but even the ladies in Tallahassee know what you did, saying the windows can stay, we'll just put a plaque on it. They never said that. You lied, man. I'm not here to create a problem for you, and you seem to think that I am. Our 130-year-old building has been damaged. Antonio Jenkins will never come on that property again, not one time. He stood in this room and lied to everybody on this dais. We may have different opinions, there's nothing wrong with that. This is about leadership. I want you to think, leadership, why subvert the system, sir? Real leadership says, hey, man, let's work this out. We wrote letters to come in to work it out, but what were we faced with when we brought the truth and the evidence to you? We were faced with, tell the city employees not to respond to their email. That's what I got. And here we are. You know, I will not argue, he has a plethora of information.
Mr. Hamilton, I cannot allow you to make accusations about Mr. Martel's behavior, and he's not in a position to defend himself.
Well, October 13th, sir, October 13th, he lied in this room, on video. That's not an accusation. He lied. The church is over there. Anybody in this room can come, and we'll show there's no roof ridge vent system. I realize you're trying to help him. I will not go away. This will go forward. And HUD, they're investigating, the Office of Inspector General is investigating. I don't interrupt you when you're speaking. But you don't care about me. Nobody in this room owns that home. Nobody in this room knows what we went through. A few commissioners do, and of course, I'm upset. 15 months. You have a job to do, folks. Do what needs to be done. Thank you.
Lucas Latham, 369 Southeast Seahunt Way. I'm living in Seaside Townhomes, and I'm a Poplin Creek park goer. None of this is going to matter in 10 years, I heard someone remark. I couldn't disagree more. Some people have a lot of money to be made, a lot of building to be done. If we're talking about the quaintness of Stewart, are we in a time lapse? The quaintness of Stewart stopped in 2019. Let's get down to some facts. We've talked about accountability, fact-knowing, impressive legal skills. Let's talk about the fact on April 12th, 2021, policy 1.85.3, which anyone online can look up, this public record, I email all the commission on Saturday, was called an objective. up, this public record, I emailed all the commission on Saturday, was called an objective. I corrected said member, and in fact, it is a policy. The policy reads, "Whenever possible, medium-density and residential open space should serve as buffers between higher and lower intensity residential uses to achieve an orderly lane use transition." This is in respect to the four-story monstrosity that looms over Poppleton Creek Parkway and the Seaside Townhomes, which were established by Mr. Reese and Mr. Freeman as low-density residential at 10.2 dwelling units per acre. Funny enough, a member up here implied that it is a medium-density buffer. How is a low-density residential structure a medium-density buffer? That's some excellent lore there. On June 26th of 2025, someone decided to speak at the FDOT meeting. They chose to tell owners in Seaside, as the news article from the TC Palm reads, "The past may haunt opponents of the Willoughby Project," that they should have read the fine print, that there might be a road coming down through here and we should have known. I will remind everyone up here, there are three options for that project. One through Alhambra, claiming eminent domain and barreling past Seaside. A less bad option, raise Wade, and a third, underappreciated option, a no build. The fact that someone up here wants to hold us to some of this equivalent of reading a 99-page iPhone agreement is preposterous. And let me remind everyone up here, and something that should have been done over the past six years, just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. And that's all I have to say about that.
Past my bedtime. Hey, there's nothing new here. This has been going on for decades, the same old us versus them, the people that make a lot of money from growth and those who get elected luckily once in a while by the people that live here and want to slow things down. By the way, before I forget, everyone needs to watch the MPO meeting from this morning to get a nice taste of our Commissioner Reed. Those of you who, you just need to see Mr. Reed in action against the big boys. It was awesome. So basically, you do have a decision to make. Lot of hubris in here tonight, a lot of arrogance, and I think that's part of it. So many people cannot believe that this majority got handed a mandate and the people that were doing what was being done before you got in were booted out. And all those people at Maria's last week are not those people that got you in, all right? So there's nothing new here. I'm reminded of, and the job is this, if you really feel as though your city manager is not working with you for that mandate that was given to you, if you feel as though he's impeding your actions, then you do have a job to do. And the hubris and the arrogance is just, it goes around. I mean, the people that think you're all just ignorant rookies, they don't know you or they don't want to know you. They're sick of knowing you, okay? So there's nothing new here. The city manager position should be an apolitical position. I'm remember, I'm reminded, the last time there was a Greenie Commission majority at Martin County, long, long time ago, Melzer and Hurd and somebody else, the majority, they got booted out by Weberman, Dieter Lezzi, and Smith in 2004. And I'd like to remind everyone here, if you guys are a little naive, it's the fact that you didn't know that as soon as the pro-growth majority was elected, Mr. Oldenhoff's job, who was working for the Greenies, okay, his job as county administrator, the same type of job as Mr. Mortel's, lasted exactly 45 seconds after those guys were sworn in, okay? So if you've given your city manager a chance to play ball and it hasn't happened yet, then yeah, you got a job to do. All right, thank you.
Hello, I'm Robert Haas from 228 Southeast Isla. I wasn't planning on speaking today. I'm doing landscaping all day. I was mentioned earlier by someone that was putting down Mike Mortel, and they mentioned the 228 Isla Airbnb thing with me. And I want to point out that there's been a lot of lies going on about myself and my property. It was said that I knew Mike Mortel and David Dias since we were kids. Totally not true. The first time I met Mike Mortel is when he brought me to court as a city attorney. And David Dias, I've never met. I don't know where they got that from. I admire the work that he did for us, but, I mean, I grew up in Stewart since 1977. Charlie Foster, the mayor many times and city commissioner, lived on my street. His son, Rob Foster, is a very, very good friend of mine. I introduced his wife, we're still best friends. I wanted to point out that all of you are harassed by, I'm sure you know the guy's name, he was a tenant in my place. He kept trying to get me to give up my property so he could take it over. On one summer, I went to visit my folks for 30 days before my son went in the Marines and remodeled their bathroom. I was called 28 days after I left and I was told by that tenant that he was hearing all kinds of rats in the house. I said, "What do you mean, you're hearing all kinds of rats?" And he said, "No, I'm just hearing a whole bunch of rats and I thought you should know." I said, "Well, I've been gone for 28 days. Why didn't you tell me two, three weeks ago?" "Oh, I don't know. I just thought you should know," and he hung up. Now, when I got home, my property has two buildings, and then between them, it's been closed in. I had a 20-pound, brand-new bag of dog food there, and on the bottom of the bag, there was a hole about this big, not like a circle cut, but cut with straight scissors, about 12 times, a bunch of little triangles. And in that 20-pound bag, there was only six pounds left. In this foyer that led through to the laundry and to the pool in the back, there was only one person in town that had a key, and that was that tenant, all right? When I got back, I called pest control people and they were looking at the bag and they said, "Well, we don't see any rat feces in there." I said, "Have you seen any or did you clean any up in this foyer?" I said, "No, I didn't even catch any in this area." And so I know that that tenant took 14 pounds of my food and fed it to rats, and I came home to a mess. I had to kill over 40 rats. Not only that, a week later, after I got back, the health department showed up. Somehow, they heard that I had a rat problem and maybe we shouldn't be living there. I let him look around. He saw that it was mostly under control, so. Now, this tenant, that is why I terminated his lease. It was a verbal lease, so I was allowed to do that. And when I did, I told him, the money that he had prepaid, I was going to pay him back out of the rent from the upstairs as agreed upon. But when I was, when I was, when I was brought in front of the court for work I did without a permit during the pandemic, Mike Mortel went after me for $43,000. I was only able to reduce it because the head of the building department back then was lying about how long I was in violation. The magistrate made him go immediately. We all had to stop. He went and got every email between us, and those documents prove that I didn't owe $43,000, I owed $18,000. So I still have that debt to pay, but the lien on my property prevents me from borrowing against my equity to pay that lien. It also avoids me being able to pay, get any money to pay Doug, or, excuse me. So there's nothing I can do until I'm able to tap into my equity or until I can rent the property out again. So I just wanted to bring that up. I want to bring up that Mike Mortel was not a friend of me. He didn't do me any favors like that lady acclaimed, so I wouldn't trust much of what she said. And I've just known, I know Mike went to school with my brothers and sisters at St. Joseph's. I was too old, went right to Martin County High. But I've never known him to be dishonest, and I know he has a great deal of experience. And I think in 25 years, you're bound to piss a few people off and, you know, like the guy with the, wants the water drained into Poppleton Creek. I can tell you from living in that neighborhood, there's a lot of storm drains and things that run right into Poppleton Creek. And that's one of its, one of its purposes is to handle the water, excess water in the area. And I just, I just wanted to tell you my side of the story and that even though I've had, been fined by Mike, I hold him in very high regard. And somebody with 25 years' experience, even though you differ on a few things, I think if you get rid of him, you're going to really piss off the voters in Martin County. So don't plan on staying around long because it's not going to happen.
Thank you, sir.
Stephen Vitale?
Is Mr. Vitale the last one?
Good evening.
That's appropriate.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, Mike Lee. Stephen Vitale, I am a resident of Soul's Point. I have been a business owner here in Stewart for a long time. I just want to say tonight that firing a city manager via trial by Facebook is wrong. Wrong. There is someone who is a blogger on Facebook that has made a lot of defamatory comments about many families that are pillars of this community, such as the Hartmans, the Latins. I could go on naming them, but if people saw a posting about a lot split that was done that I was involved in and that you all voted unanimously on, and the history of it, so we don't rely on Facebook information, I'm going to tell you the history right now. Sandy Thurlow, who is our local historian, came to me and said, "This is the most historic house in Stewart that your first judge appointed by Governor Martin..."
What year is this, Mr. Vitale?
What's that?
What year is this?
What year is what?
That this is taking place?
Oh, approximately a year and a half ago. She came to me and told, because some of you may know I have experience in saving historic houses and I'm very passionate about it. I've been doing this for a long time. I've been putting my blood, sweat, and tears into keeping our town as charming and as historic as it can be in the same way that Mr. Mortel has spent his blood, sweat, and tears over the past 25 years serving this city. So about a year and a half ago, Sandra Thurlow came to me and said, "Stephen, what can you do to save this house?" Because it happened to be sitting on the very corner of a large lot. And everybody knew that when that, when this family sold that lot, that historic house was going to be knocked down and a gigantic McMansion was going to be built. So I said, "You know what? Let me see what I can do." And my son, Christopher, who manages the hotel and who also paints all the murals, he had just gotten married and he needed a house. So I said, "You know what? If we could get this house, we could preserve it, which we love to do, and Christopher can live in it." But he couldn't afford to own it because it was a very expensive piece of property. So we decided, if there's a way that we can get this house and have a separate lot for that and then sell off the other lot. Everybody voted on that with zero questions. Somebody today said it was a controversial lot split. There was not, I don't believe there was one question that was asked. It was unanimously approved. And we accomplished our goal, which was to save another historic house and prevent a gigantic McMansion from being built right there and the house being knocked down, okay? So I happen to live in this town a long time, okay? I know the Mortels. I know a lot of people. I'm very close with them. And I also know the Baradas. And I sang at Mr. Mortel's brother's funeral, okay? It's a small town. We all know each other. The Mortels live in that, in that neighborhood. Mike's wife happens to be a real estate broker, and she was dealing with people who were looking in that neighborhood. I decided, wow, there's already a lead. If you're in business, you know, if you have something, bird in the hand is better than two in the bush. I decided to give her the listing. The listing agreement was signed one month, one month after you all voted on this. So you tell me what, how, and how dare the person in this, I think is still sitting here...
Direct your comments this way.
Yes.
Direct your comments here.
I don't even need to say it, but I'm insulted. I'm insulted that somebody would think that there was any undue influence at all. There was no undue influence. You all unanimously voted on it and to even, this whole thing is a joke.
Creation of the lot was not the problem.
Will you allow him to finish?
Let me just finish, let me finish what I wanted to say. I wanted to say, I wanted to just say a few more things, too. I want to, I know you give me a little bit more time, and I appreciate it because this is important. I want to say that Mike has, I've been an attorney, that I've represented clients. Every time I've represented a client and Mike was on the other side, I was so, I was so impressed with how well he advocated for this city. Every single time, without fail, without fail. I just want to say, there's a few Bible verses that have been brought up. That's wonderful. I want to bring up one, too. Ephesians 4, okay? The body of Christ, okay? The body of Christ is made up of different people with different skill sets and different talents. You all have different skill sets and different talents. Some of you, small businesses. Some of you are experienced with city planning. Some of you have been commissioners and have been serving on all the different boards and a city attorney. We need to, we need to work together, okay? This has become, is slowly becoming a very dysfunctional city. Let's, let's keep Mr. Mortel, okay? Let's get together and have a barbecue at the Owl House, invite everybody, and start being a city where everybody respects everybody. That's what I think we should do. Mr. Mortel should be retained. He should be awarded for his service to this city. Thank you for your time.
Does that conclude public comment? I hate to do this, but let's take a 10-minute break, so we'll reconvene at 9:20. We'll stand at, we'll stand in recess for 10 minutes.
I'd like to respond to some of the allegations that I've heard against my without cause tonight.
Is there any objection to Mr. Mortel?
Which, which specific ones were they?
I don't know, it's all of them.
Okay.
Just the insulting ones.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mortel.
First, I just wrote some notes here at the end because I couldn't help myself. I've sat here quietly for a long time and most recently it's been since Commissioner Reed ambushed me with the firing a couple of weeks ago. But when I listened to the people speak, I was truly humbled by, by the outpouring from the community, and I'm going to get into that in a second. But I also heard people speak that, that spoke against me. The, the recent ones were the Hamiltons. And they got up and Commissioner Reed assisted them for the last six months or so to publicly abuse me every two weeks and to accuse me of crimes and to tell me I'm a fraud and a liar. And whoever out there is yelling it out, that's impressive too. In any event, what really happened was there was a contractor that did some bad work at their house and our CRA director within two weeks told them he was going to replace, that she would have their windows replaced and their, their roof repaired. But that wasn't enough. It was a grant paying for it and they wanted a different type of insulation and air conditioning for their whole house, even though it wasn't included in the grant. And they weren't signing anything unless they got the air conditioning on top of it. And then we started investigating it. And during the investigation, I had found out that they had gone out and applied for an SBA loan and received a $41,000 grant that said that their home was an office and that their office had commercial office insurance on it and that they had never gotten a change of use for residential purposes. And that that was all still in play because the bankruptcy was filed in March of 24. And I stopped then and said, wait a second, guys. When the city first applied for this grant, we didn't know they were committing two types of grant fraud. But I can't in, in good conscience let my staff move forward on this because then they'll be complacent and part of it. And the City of Stewart doesn't do that stuff. And the city didn't do it. And those of you choking on yourselves, maybe you do it and maybe you look the other way, but we don't. And the city never has because the city's had a culture of honesty. And in our staff meetings, we talk about it every week. And you guys enjoy the fact that the Hamiltons are, were committing the fraud. But the fact is, if we participated in that, it would jeopardize all of the future grant applications for the City of Stewart as well. And Commissioner Reed knew about it. Commissioner Reed, I told him myself. He also went over to the Hamiltons' house on multiple occasions and saw all the work they were doing in the house on their own without a permit. But just like Robin Cartwright said, this, let's not treat them differently than the guy on Isla Street that Mike sought a $43,000 loan against. Instead, Mr. Reed allowed them to continue working with no violation of the code. But it goes on and we continue forward and they pull their hearing and they do the whole thing on me. And it all of a sudden is my fault. But before I could get it even resolved, the city has a thing, it's called the municipal handbook. And it says that the commission's job is to set the policy of the city and the staff's job is to do the administration. And as city manager, Frank McChrystal said it tonight, the city manager has to carry out the staff's, the commission's directives and policy. And as city manager, I did that. The city commission before them was pro Costco, I did Costco and that's why Robin Cartwright's been after me. And then after that, they were pro Brightline. And then this commission didn't want Brightline and we turned off Brightline. And this commission wanted to do a zoning in progress. Who handled the zoning in progress? It was me. I, if, if I wanted to be contrary to this commission's actions, I could have gone out and hired some consultant that would have drug it through the mud and it would have taken 10 times as long and it wouldn't have gotten done in the six months. And you know what else? I wouldn't have been called an idiot by people telling me that I was not following good planning practices and that I really needed to be pushing mixed use and other things like that. Instead, what I did was exactly what the commission wanted me to do. I brought it forward and I got it done in six months and every single initiative they wanted adopted was adopted. That's what happened. And then when that was finished, we moved on to the budget and they wanted a million dollars cut from the budget and I was only able to do 917,000. But it was pretty darned close. So I challenge you guys that want to choke on your, on comments and make fun of me to think about what it was I didn't do that this commission wanted. Because every single thing they wanted, I did. And that's okay. And I know that we can be fired at any time, but not for cause, for any reason or the will of the board. And honestly, that's their prerogative and I totally get it. But that's not what happened in this case. What happened in this case is Commissioner Reed brought up that he wanted to see my contract. He then never mentioned to me or the city attorney that he was planning on firing me for the next two weeks. Never mentioned it and we saw each other probably five different times. He even saw the Stewart News, spoke to them about it and they asked him flat out because they called me and said, is he going to fire you? And I said, I don't know. You ought to call him and ask him. Next day, I read in the newspaper that they did in fact ask him. And he said, no, I'm not, I'm not firing him. I just want to review his contract and make some changes to it. Is that transparency? It would be if he didn't first thing out of his mouth at the next meeting say, I'm going to fire him and move to fire him for cause and then say, oh, but wait, he's a good guy and I'm not, I, I don't want to fire him. I don't want to say all the bad things he's done. So if he resigns, we won't have to abuse him. He wanted me to walk away from my contract and I didn't. So you know what I got? Abused. You guys have all read it, day in and day out. I got abused. I got abused tonight. It was fun. You guys choking on it, you think it's great. I hope it comes back to you one day. I'm okay with it because I know I didn't commit any crimes. I didn't do anything for cause and I didn't endorse a fraud on Florida Commerce. I stood firm on it. The other one was the rudges and some thing that I did in 2009. I was never, the City of Stewart was never even a party to their lawsuit after they signed full releases in 2012. And whatever they said I did went to the 11th Circuit Court of Appeal and the Fourth DCA on appeal and were all affirmed, were all accurate. And you know how much it cost the city? Nothing. You know why? Because I defended it and that's why she's mad at me. I could have said, go hire some other lawyer and let us spend 100 grand defending a frivolous lawsuit, but I didn't. This is, you had your turn. So Frank McChrystal said, if you're giving him a chance to play ball and it has not happened, then you have a job to do. And I told him during the break, I, I respect Frank and I totally agree with what he said. And I challenged Frank, next time you see me, tell me if you can think of something I did where I didn't play ball. And the board knows that I've implemented every goal they've wanted. And if they've come to me and asked me to do something, I've done it. They even said I did a good job last meeting. It was just that Commissioner Reed didn't get to hire the city manager and therefore he wants to hire his own, which is fine. That's, the board's prerogative. But that's not for cause. That's, say it, be honest with the public. Tell them what your real motivation is. I wish Commissioner Reed had told everybody that when he was running for office so they would have known that too when they were pulling the lever to vote. But he didn't because that's not transparency. I've adjusted my position every time. This is not a situation where I failed to go along with the program. There's been increasing friction between Mortel and the majority of the commission over the last six months and they're right, there has. And it's been horribly frustrating for me and it's, I've been sitting here quietly and I've been cringing over the last six months because it started when Commissioner Reed started calling Florida Commerce and making private phone calls with them and sending them emails and doing administrative work, which violates the city charter, the city policy, the municipal handbook, without a doubt. It also included every, every other meet, every other Monday when he would ambush me with a Hamilton thing, even though he saw me the week before. It got so bad that there was comments around staff. We knew when Commissioner Reed was going to ambush me, it'd be when he didn't come see me the Friday before. But I stood quietly. I let it happen. Even during this meeting, members of the public laughed about how the city was operating in the past. They did not recognize the staff, the, the staff's job is to follow policies adopted by the city commission. I think it's interesting that they blame me for doing what the commission asked in the past, Brightline, Costco, whatever it might be. But now, when I say what the commission asked me to do now, it doesn't count and it doesn't matter. And if I were to stay, the next commission would blame me for doing what this commission wanted. But that's what a city manager is supposed to do. And I hope that the next city manager has the courage to come to this city and to follow the culture we used to have in this city without the fear of retribution. But what's, what else happened over the last six months? Well, we did the zoning in progress and we pushed it through and we got it done. But then the state stepped in and they pushed Senate Bill 180 on us. And I was the first one to say, guys, we can't follow the zoning in progress anymore. We've got to pull it because Senate Bill 180 says we're supposed to rescind everything back to last August. But on August 11th, even though I was saying that's a violation of state law, this commission said, nope, we're telling staff to violate state law. And the next day, I had to go to the staff meeting and say the commission voted, we're going to continue to follow our zoning in progress. And the answer was, well, what about Senate Bill 180? We're going to challenge that and say it's unconstitutional, which by the way, is a great thing to do if you want to challenge a law. That's exactly what you do. However, while it's pending, if you go back and watch the August 11th meeting, the city attorney and I were telling this board, hey, guys, it's kind of like if a person went out drinking and then they got pulled over for drinking and driving and the sheriff said, I'm going to arrest you for DUI. You say to the sheriff, oh no, you can't arrest me. I'm going to challenge this law for being unconstitutional so it doesn't apply to me. That's what happened. That's transparency? But you know what? I sat quietly. It wasn't until I read and saw everything that this board did to me over the last two weeks and the lack of confidence and the fact that they would hammer every one of the staff of the City of Stewart and me included, and it didn't matter who was in their way. And what I did for the last six months and really for the last year was defend my staff. I wasn't involved in the Hamiltons thing. That was a CRA matter, but I stood right in front of it and owned it because that's what you do. But the city lost touch with the process and the structure that used to be the City of Stewart's government. And it used to be that the commission would give policy and that would, someone would go to the commissioners instead of trying to take over the matter and solve it on their own, they would come back to staff and have staff do it. And the city code of conduct clearly states that that's what needs to happen. And all the commissioners sign it and it's in the charter. You can look it up. The charter refers to the code of conduct and it's right there. And Commissioner Reed said he didn't care as much about the code of conduct as he does about the Commission on Ethics, but it shouldn't be, I care about this one more than I care about this one. It should be both matter. It should be that staff matters. It should be that everyone matters. It should be that the people here matter and that people's voices matter. But that's all gone because they no longer matter. What matters is the decision that was made before we got here. And how are we going to ram it down everybody's throat? I know that I'm sounding a little frustrated, but you know why? Because I am. And it's not because I'm losing my job. I accepted that two weeks ago when I found out I was losing my job. It's I knew that it wasn't for cause and I was going to stand firm on that. I want to take a minute to thank the residents of the community from the bottom of my heart because over the past several days, I've been truly humbled by the incredible outpouring of support and Robin Cartwright made up stories that she knew I was the one behind putting out everybody and getting everybody to do it, completely made up. I didn't do any of it. I didn't return the media's calls. Ask them. I didn't email them back. I didn't ask anybody to do any of the rallies for me. And in fact, I actually asked people not to because I said, the only chance I have of getting my job is if this commission doesn't think it's me versus them and that if these rallies happen, it's going to look like it's me versus them. But when I saw that it was clear that it was just, let's have fun and batter Mike Mortel for the next two weeks, I was like, you know what? I don't care if the rallies happen. In fact, I'm happy they're happening because I get to see the people actually come out for me. And you know what? It's been heartwarming. It's been great. It's, it really has. I've always loved Stewart and I still do. The city is made up of many different types of people and all of them deserve to be included in the process. But the process matters and the structure matters and the culture matters. And every single Tuesday, when I have to tell my staff, yes, we're going to do this and we are going to work through this and it's going to be fine and you're not, you guys know you're going to be okay. And when Commissioner Reed went into the development office during the budget cycle and started telling people, you're not on the list to get fired. I'll make sure you're saved. And he was not doing it on purpose. He didn't even realize he said it, but two people came to my office crying that day. Now, I said to them, he was just in passing. He didn't mean it. Because he didn't, I don't think he even remembers it.
I don't even remember saying that, but I'm listening.
It happened and if you don't believe me, I'll be gone. They're not going to be afraid to talk about me after I'm gone. So talk to them tomorrow. But the, it, it can, this proceeding would not have gone this way if there had been true transparency. If Commissioner Reed had gotten up whenever he got up and said, you know, I just never had it for Mike Mortel. I don't feel he's the right guy for the job and the contract says I can fire him and I'm going to fire him because of that. Nothing would have come of it. There would have been no rallies. There would have been no nothing. It would have been, just like a couple of commenters said, city managers come and go. But what really happened is Commissioner Reed teed it up for his Facebook friends to bash my teeth in for two weeks and said, if Mike doesn't resign, we're going to fill you in and let you know at all what's going to happen. And the media's all here so we can ask them. Every time they asked Commissioner Reed what it was, he'd say, stay tuned and come Monday. We're going to tell you Monday. But the code of conduct calls that an ambush and says that commissioners should be removed for being an ambush. So if anybody's doing anything wrong, maybe it's the people doing the ambush. I don't think Commissioner Giobbe has been deeply involved in it. I think that obviously she came and met with me and we had a nice conversation and she was candid about it. And she even said to me, you're not being fired for cause in, in her book. But she had her own reasons and I respect that and that's her choice. But if I wasn't being fired for cause, then why was I being fired for cause? And why was it all about me being delayed and we have to wait to find out what the cause is and we're going to have the cause and here comes the cause? It was because they wanted to be able to say the traffic violation and the Steven Vitale real estate transaction. Steven Vitale is a very grounded person in our community and any one of you can ask him. I never had a single discussion with him about selling that lot, participating in the sale of that lot or having anything to do with that lot. His lawyer contacted me to put it on the agenda and I put it on the agenda. It was on the front page of the newspaper after that. It turns out, my wife and I live on the street, so multiple people approached her and said, hey, is that lot for sale? And it wasn't because it didn't, we didn't split the lot that night. It didn't get split until he closed on it and did whatever he did a month or so later. And I didn't call him on the phone or talk to him about it. I didn't have a single conversation. And he didn't promise me anything for putting it on the agenda. In fact, it's kind of sad that that Facebook page would actually make those accusations and want to drag your community through the dirt like that just so you can feel a little sensationalism. It's, it's gross because it didn't happen. And you know what else? I've offered to sit down with you many times and tell you what happened, but you won't because you don't want the real truth. And not one person met with Steven to do any of this investigation. And in fact, last week, when I asked Commissioner Reed if he got all the goods on me, he started talking about the traffic thing, knowing that it's not much. And then when I said to him, well, you know, it's funny because the Commission on Ethics says, you're not supposed to use your position as a city commissioner to be meeting with the union members, to read the email that you read, to take that position in order to use it for your personal gain. And he goes, oh, I've known about it for weeks. Okay, so you weren't transparent during the first three meetings we had because you never brought it up? Or you were, but you didn't bring it up anyway? Die, I don't get it. But what I know for sure is that I don't care when you found out about it. When you used your position as a city commissioner to get the email and meet with the union members that you were talking about, that was a real violation of a real law. I've been here 25 years and there's no violations that I've done in 25 years. The best thing we can come up with is that I got a, driving on a suspended license that was dismissed later because I had paid the ticket and that a, my wife, who was a Realtor, did a real estate transaction. Be careful, guys. It's a bigger conspiracy than that. Steven Vitale did a closing for me in 2002 as well. But it was part of the plan, right? Because that's how it'll play out. It wasn't. That's not what happened. But it also occurred to me that I had members of my staff saying to me, can you believe Commissioner Giobbe told the media that they would never tell the staff not to follow state law? And I told them, no, Commissioner Giobbe did not say that to intentionally lie to the media. I don't think Commissioner Giobbe realizes that they told staff not to follow state law. And as we sit here at this moment, I still feel that way. I don't think she lied to the media. I think that she just doesn't realize that the action they took on August 11th at about two hours into the meeting, when they told staff not to follow state law, was actually telling staff not to follow state law. But I digress. I want to take a moment and thank all of you, including the ones that don't like me and that want to come to the meetings because you know what? You kept me straight. It's, you weren't the first ones that came to meetings and did it. It's been happening in my whole career. There's always somebody in the audience and that's good. That's good balance. It makes everybody mind their Ps and Qs. I don't have any problem with that. Thank you. I've spent my life serving Stewart, not for the recognition, but because I truly love Stewart. I moved away and I wanted to come home again. And Stewart's my home and Stewart was my parents' home and Stewart's my children's home and Stewart's going to remain my home after I'm not the city manager in about 15 minutes. But I love this city and I love the people who make up this city. And seeing so many people come together and speak out and stand up for what they believe in has been one of the most meaningful experiences of my career. And I know it's not standing up just for me. I think it's the straw that broke the camel's back and I think they were standing up for lots of different reasons and I might be the catalyst to it. But the truth of it is, I got to see it and I got to feel like it was for me and it will go to me, with me to my grave. It was honestly the most honoring and respectful thing that I've ever received in my entire career. No matter what happens and whoever takes my place, I'll never forget the passion of Stewart and those for and against whatever the issues are and the ability to speak about it and the, and the structure and the culture that we used to have where people didn't use misinformation on social media to twist things and make people look bad because they like divisiveness and they like having their community at each other's throats and they think it's great because they got a like or a checkbox or whatever they got from it and makes them feel like a big shot for 15 minutes. I'm deeply grateful for everyone's support and I'll always genuinely, genuinely hope, I will always be genuinely hopeful that Stewart will find its way back to the happiest seaside town. My sincere hope is that the City of Stewart can return from the form of government envisioned by our charter, one where the city commission focuses on setting policy on behalf of the residents and the professional staff carries out those policies without interference. Overall, I'm hopeful that we can return to local government where staff is not afraid to tell the commission that they must follow the law, where staff is not afraid of retribution for following the charter, the policies, the code of conduct, the state statutes. I'm also saddened that I'm losing my job because I have continuously expressed concern to the board regarding those policies and those laws. And ever since I was on the Board of Adjustment in 1992, I felt a, a desire to work for and with the people of Stewart. And I've done so. But last, last Thursday at about 2 o'clock, I was also threatened like Mr. Reed, but I didn't run to the police. I was told that if I don't resign and waive my contractual rights by today, that this commission was going to bring up the driving on a suspended license and the real estate transaction. Now, that's actually extortion. It's the real deal, not pretend, but the real deal. And I said, if they bring it up on Monday, I'm bringing up the extortion on Monday. And they still brought it up. I don't know if it's because of a lack of experience or a just complete disregard for all of it, but it happened and I was threatened with it for real. Now, I'm pretty sure that my closing remarks have swayed the commission to keep me. But the funny part is, I knew before I even got here tonight I was fired. Go look at my office. I moved out last week. Yeah, we're happy for you too, Mrs. Rogge. You've been such a treat. I don't have to, I don't have to be quiet and polite to your rudeness anymore.
Well, I love you.
I just want to thank those of you, all of you for caring. I just wish some of you would stop getting your only information from the lies you find on social media. And I hope that all of you find the moral perpetuity to hold everybody accountable and to not let anybody not follow the policies and not follow the procedures and not follow the state law. And hopefully tomorrow, after I'm gone, the city will turn back around and stop doing it all. But I've been unable to keep it from happening. I've been begging Commissioner Reed to stop contacting Florida Commerce. They actually called me on the phone and said, he is blowing us up, were their words. I then had to look up and see some of the emails he sent them, like, you must be at the next meeting. He, they told me that he contacted a state representative to get them in trouble for not calling him back fast enough. They told me that he wanted to know how much money we were going to be giving the Hamiltons. I mean, it was crazy stuff. I mean, I can't even believe it myself. But he knew it. And when I asked him about it, he'd say, I'm not calling them at all. I'm not talking to them, nothing. And the city attorney was standing right there when I asked. So it wasn't just the two of us. And there's no doubt that it continued and continued and continued, so much so that the Hamiltons won't even talk to staff, they'll only talk to Commissioner Reed, which is why at the last meeting, I said, let's have Commissioner Reed handle it from here on out. He's still doing such a wonderful job with the administration of the city that he should be the one in charge. Because I can't be because he's usurped all of my authority. And when I tell someone like Mr. Hamilton, no, we're not going to give you air conditioning on top of your grant money. And he says, yes, you are. If you want to get rid of me, you're gonna, or you're going to be gone. And he starts this campaign and look who won, Mr. Hamilton. But you know what? I didn't give him his air conditioning and I didn't commit the fraud. And I'll live with that. That's all I've got. Thank you for, thank you for giving me an opportunity to serve this community.
Mr. Mortel?
Thank you, Mr. Mortel.
Stay for the vote?
For listen, listen to me. Oh, if you don't want to, that's fine. Okay, I'm going to take rank. I'm kind of, I, well, we're not supposed to talk about age because of all this seniority and... and the federal laws and whatnot. But I've been on the commission, I think, the longest.
I am older than you.
Okay, well, yes, not the age. That's why I said, I wasn't going by the age. I was just going by the commission. And I've heard everything tonight, and I appreciate Mr. Reed and his idea of wanting to speak up and wanting to get involved when he believes that he wants to participate fully in what he considers to be his job or position as a council member, and I appreciate that. And I just did not envision, when I agreed, that I thought it was okay. I thought it was routine. Let me have a copy of Mr. Mortel's contract. And I said, I had no problem. I didn't realize it was going to come to this. I know I heard all the cries for let emails be public, let other things be whatever, transparency. But I didn't realize that there was a path to all of this, and the path would lead to the motion to terminate Mr. Mortel delayed, and then tonight, there's a motion to terminate Mr. Mortel. I know Mr. Mortel when he was a city commissioner. I know him when he was city attorney and our city manager, as well as being as an attorney. I have not investigated all the details about Mr. Mortel, and I've only seen some of the things, which are some of the negative things that have been put out, but I haven't checked out all of them. But from what I know of him, I didn't need to check out all of them, and I didn't see the consequence of them as being anything, whether it's ethical or criminal or anything in that league. For my judgment, I did not see it. So the options that were given by our city attorney, and before the options that were given tonight, we were asked after the last meeting, when we delayed, let us meet with staff, let us meet with the department heads, and see how they feel. If there was an issue with Mr. Mortel not following the policies that are in the comprehensive plan, that is in the charter, that is in all the stuff that was set a long time ago before I was on the commission, some of them, some rules have changed along the way, but most of them have been longstanding rules, longstanding goals for the city of Stewart. When we had new commissioners, the newspaper asked, and it was asked here, and I said, I will agree that our new commissioners, I know that they'll want to go through, look at the land use plan, look at comprehensive plan, all of our regulations, and that they may want to suggest and make changes. I know that one of our commissioners pushed hard, and we worked on at least a potential change, and that was done with the zoning in progress. I didn't hear of any other changes, whether to the charter or to our comprehensive plan or to our land use regulations. But if there were those things, that's what needs to come forward, because we're the ones who set policy, and staff follows the policy. We hire a city manager. We have a council-manager form of government. We're the council. We make decisions when we're here meeting, and we set policies, and we uphold the policies that are there in the plans that we have to keep our city going. Our manager, there's a long list of things that our manager does, that is do the administrative day-to-day, which means meeting with our council people, whether it's daily, weekly, monthly, on occasion, whatever it is, but at least a regular basis so that we all have an idea. There's a teaching ethic that goes with this job, and it goes from both the Florida League of Cities, as well as the relationship with the department heads and the city administrator, to make sure that those who come on the council know what the rules are, how things happen, how things operate, and how not to interfere in staff daily doings, just to make sure that policies go right. If they're not going right, then bring it up. Or bring it up with the manager, and if the manager and that person says something needs to be discussed with the city, it comes there. So after the last meeting, I met with all the department heads. I heard all the scuttle when we first hired Mr. Mortel. Oh, he's tough. Oh, he's going to be just like he's a lawyer. He's going to push these department heads. But when I met with people for two to three days last week, not one single one said Mr. Mortel was honorary with them, that he was unconscionable, that he was whatever it is, anything that's negative that you'd say that he is not dealing well with staff. Everybody was happy. They've gone through tough times. We've had to make adjustments to our budget. We've gone through things post-COVID that he has had to deal with. And they were happy with the contracts that they're working with, police, fire, other departments, and the things that has been achieved by the city, kind of doing more with less. And these department heads, not one of them complained to me. In fact, they were really wondering, what will happen now that if their head person is to be gone, then how will things go? Yes, they're trained. Yes, they're professional. Yes, they will go through. But it's the part that really hurts, I believe, staff, and I didn't talk to every staff member, but the thing that the image of what is happening with the city of Stewart and how it affects people right down the line. And which day is it going to be? Somebody will come for them. Somebody will come for the city clerk. Somebody will come for the utilities director. Somebody will come for the police chief. We have a new police chief. He's still being tried. He's true, but he's still being tried. Okay? We have tried and true. And so all those things are concerns, and we need to pull back. I think a couple of people have said, I would ask Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Giobbe seconded the motion, if we pull back. I've spoken deeply with our human resources director, and I've asked, how can we come up with a plan? How can we have Mr. Mortel meet with us individually? Meet with Mr. Reed? How can we heal our city before it becomes broken? I know that there are dissatisfied people. I know that there are people who come here who believe that the city of Stewart is against them and that Mr. Mortel represents a part of that. It's not just him. It's all of us up here. And we make divergent decisions sometimes. Sometimes we make decisions that come together. But we've heard a lot from people, both sides today. But I think that side that talked about reasonableness, that talks about us, we have an opportunity here to say if we're not happy with the job that he's doing or the way that he's communicating, whether it's with people in the public or whether it's us as city council members, let us try to see what we can do within our family, within our own. This is the city of Stewart. A lot of people love Stewart. I've heard people tell me, I'm not coming down there to have dinner anymore. I'm not having breakfast downtown. I don't like Stewart anymore. Yes, it may be a way to not have people want to move here, but we're limited. We're eight square miles. We're developed. We're built out. So those who are going to come here, they're going to come here. And yes, there are people who could be here, but they're living in Port St. Lucie because it's more affordable. That doesn't mean that they don't get here to come and say something, because Stewart affects the region, and the region affects Stewart. So it's important. So that is absolute nonsense when we try to jeer somebody because they give an address that's not Stewart. Yes, it's important for some instances when people do put things or give their addresses as if they're in Stewart, but you can't find their property names, their names on any property in Stewart. But that happens. But you know what? That's for certain reasons. If we're doing traffic and transportation, it's important to know where people live and work, and that's why the numbers were like that when we did certain studies, and it was important to know who actually lived in Stewart. But we just need to pull back. We need to look. We need to talk to our personnel director. And I'm going to ask, as a person who's been here for some time, that we give Mr. Mortel a plan. We work with him. We work individually between him and personnel, come up with something, and then we tell the public what are some of those ideas that we've come up with to make sure that he's going to stick with that and report to us, whether it's quarterly, give him a certain time, whether it's six more months, a year, and do a performance plan. We owe it to ourselves. We owe it to our residents. Mr. Reed has absolutely every single right, and he knows what he's doing, and he knows his reasons for it. But I'm looking at the rest of the city of Stewart. Whether you agree with Mr. Mortel or not, or whether you agree with all the decisions that we make up here or any of them that you don't agree with, I just think we need to look at the best, the greater good. We need to look at the greater good for the community, for what we stand for as the county seat of Martin County Esport Incorporated in 1914. We need to look for the greater good, not for his pocket. His pocket is not going to worry about us. He can go off and get another big job somewhere. It's how things look. Somebody said that you can do certain things, and they said it for another reason, but I'll say this, just because you can do something doesn't mean that you have to and that you should do it. I think we need to get into reasoning. We need to look at the morale of the staff right now, the morale of the people, the families. We've had so many families spoke tonight. I'm not giving any special deference, but I will say that they have been here for three, four generations, and I've seen some of them, talked to some of them before this meeting, and they are absolutely appalled. They're, what is going on at City Hall? What is happening at City Hall? Something in the water, maybe, but we're trying to clean that up. I just ask you, and I'll ask openly, if Mr. Reed could either withdraw his motion or amend it, to see if we can have some time to make up a performance plan. I would appreciate that. There's a motion and a second on the floor, and I know that, that I can't make another motion until something changes. But I want to let you know what my mind is and what it is. And last of all, Mr. Mortel, if this is the last time that I look you eye to eye, I appreciate your work and what you've done for our city despite not everything going smooth all the time. And you have stood here. Normally, it's women who have grace, but you have been here last meeting and this meeting, and I consider it with such grace, to be able to speak, not cry, not get angry, but to just be here and to respond appropriately. That shows leadership, and thank you.
Mr. Reed, are you willing to withdraw your motion?
I'm not willing to withdraw my motion. I'm not here to go back and forth with the city manager. Some things were thrown way out of context. I will say that. But I'm not here to go toe-to-toe with Mike, whether certain things he said were true or untrue. I'll agree to disagree. We have different perspectives. But yeah, I'm not willing to withdraw my motion by any means.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor.
I have no more comments.
It's very difficult to fire, follow, fire, both, but to follow Mr. Mortel's very heartfelt comments. You know, there has been friction between the commission and Mr. Mortel, and a lot of that is between myself and Mr. Mortel. That's because I disagree with many of the decisions that have been made by this commission. And I've said to him, how the heck can you let this happen? And his response is, I work for the board, and I will follow their direction. I also spoke to the department heads, and of course, there have been no complaints against Mr. Mortel filed with HR, but they made me aware of something that I hadn't thought of. So here's someone who's done everything he's been asked to do, and he got fired. And so they're like, so I'm worried if I do my job, I can be fired too. And it seems completely random. And this is going to have a devastating impact on the morale of our staff, especially the more qualified ones. We had a comment, a public comment, oh, if he does such a good job, they'll be fine. Apparently, this person doesn't understand the idea of loyalty. And Mr. Mortel has built a very competent and very loyal staff. And unfortunately, it's that staff with whom most, that's who people interact with in the city of Stewart, is our staff. And for us not to try to understand how dramatic an impact it could have on them is naive. This is a very cowardly decision. This is a grossly unfair decision. People have been able to come up here and make allegations, and we do not have a proper process to hear both sides of those. I cannot believe, I think, Mr. Haas coming up so much. Apparently, the information I was provided concerning Mr. Haas, and this was by someone I respect, who's very intelligent, very thoughtful, cares about the community, it was complete lies. That is remarkable. I'm sorry, Mr. Haas, but that's why a proper procedure is so valuable, and those lies have been running around the internet unfettered, and it's such a grave disappointment. I was attending a meeting about the Indian River Lagoon, and an elected official came up to me, and this sums it up. He says, I have never seen a group of elected officials who are so determined to ignore the will of the majority of their residents. Seen no other comments? It gives me no joy.
Mayor Rich, may I?
Commissioner Reed?
Yeah, I want to touch base on that meeting with department heads. I met with all department heads as well. I won't state how many, but there was more than one that told me I was on the right path. And I'll disagree with you on the public record request. There was actually three, by the way, complaints in the HR file when I did one, so I'm not sure where you got your information from, but there were three that existed. I do know one of the news agencies did a public record request for the same thing that I did, and there were zero found. So it does make you wonder, and I know the public won't always see it. It's good publicity. It's good headlines, but there's two stories being told up here. But yes, I've been told one thing during public record request, and the news was told something different, and I'm
Commissioner Clark?
No.
Commissioner Giobbe?
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned.
Motion passed.